Good evening, everyone. Welcome. It is Wednesday, July 26, 2023. This is a regular session of the City of Bloomington Common Council. Welcome and welcome back from break, everyone. Will Deputy Clerk McDowell please call the roll?
Councilmember Flaherty?
We have Councilmember Flaherty on Zoom, I believe.
I'll go to Zoom last. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Scambalary?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Volin?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
And Flaherty?
Here. My apologies, didn't have audio enabled when you first called. Thank you.
No problem. And Rosenberger?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And let's continue with our land and labor acknowledgement. I'll invite Vice President Piedmont Smith to read that for us.
Thank you. We recognize that the City of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people, and we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, and specifically Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity.
Thank you. Continuing with our agenda summation for this evening, we will begin with the approval of four sets of minutes for the regular sessions on January 19th, August 3rd, August 17th, and September 7th, 2022. We'll then move into reports, including council member reports. We have then two reports from the mayor and city offices, including a report on the 2023 community survey and a report on Old State Road 37 and Lower Cascades Park multi-use path alternatives. We'll hear any reports from council committees, and then we'll come to our first of two periods of public comment. We'll then take up appointments to boards and commissions, and then move into legislation for second readings and resolutions. Included there are Resolution 2313, Resolution on the Hazards of Artificial Intelligence, Resolution 2314, to initiate amendments to the city's comprehensive plan regarding accessible transportation and mobility principles. And then we'll move into legislation for first readings. There, we will hear the first reading for Ordinance 23-14, to amend Title VI of the Bloomington Municipal Code and titled Health and Sanitation, regarding updating and increasing fees for service and harmonizing Chapters IV and V of Title VI of the Bloomington Municipal Code. We'll then come to our second of two periods of public comment. We'll then take up matters of council schedule, and finally, we'll adjourn. So with that, let's move into approval of minutes.
Madam President, I move the approval of the following minutes: January 19th, 2022 regular session, August 3rd, 2022 regular session, August 17th, 2022 regular session, and September 7th, 2022 regular session.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, and just by way of a point of information for the public, we will be taking all votes this evening by a roll call vote because we have members participating virtually. That is part of the state regulation, so if you're wondering why we're just not saying "aye" and "no," that's why. With that, Deputy Clerk McDowell, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalary?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
And Councilmember Sims?
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those minutes are approved. We'll come into our time of reports now, beginning with council member reports. I'd like to start on Zoom this evening with Councilmember Flaherty.
No report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenberger?
No report. Thank you.
Thank you. Coming back into council chambers, I'll start on my far left this evening, Councilmember Volin.
Thank you. Yes, I wanted to address an issue that I don't think is on the agenda tonight, but has been the subject of a number of emails to council. The land labor acknowledgement that we just heard is the kind of thing that we do to speak for people who've been pushed out, who don't have agency, who perhaps cannot speak for themselves, or have not in a long time. We have started to do such things in arrears, to pay attention to those who may not be as well represented as they should be. And we come now to a question about the road through Lower Cascades. We've got a number of emails from residents of the area who say that closing the road would be detrimental to their quality of life. But one of the things that a colleague pointed out in a response to a letter writer is that we have adopted plans that were done through community consensus, our comprehensive plan, our transportation plan. And those were, as many people who are on this day as can testify, long, drawn-out, painful conversations, difficult conversations, we had over a number of months and years to adopt them. One of the tenets of these plans was that there should be a safe route to Bloomington North in this city for people going to school, namely, children. And this debate has come down to which population we prefer to favor, because it seems like we can't accommodate both. Either that, or we can't do it within the constraints of the dollars that we have available to us. It will cost $3 million to build a separate path, last I understood. It'll cost $3 million to build a separate path through Cascades for the sake of bicyclists and pedestrians. It'll cost almost nothing to close the road and to turn that into a multi-use path. I don't have the answer. I am still listening to everyone discussing it, but I'm hearing a predominance of voices of people who are longtime residents of the neighborhood that is north of Cascades, or the neighborhoods. I hear very little from people who might use the path, namely, the children who would walk to Bloomington North, or who would bike to Bloomington North. Or, I mean, if they're not doing it now, maybe it's because they don't feel safe doing it, like so many bicyclists and pedestrians don't feel safe in many other parts of the city. And that when we build a protected bike path, for example, on Seventh Street, I hear no end of belly aching from people who were accustomed to being able to move their car wherever they wanted to. So I would like to also point out that a resolution that we adopted four years ago was, which was brought by the Youth for Environmental Sustainability, a resolution that was supported by the Bloomington Commission on Sustainability, and that was adopted unanimously by this council, specifically committed us, in a resolution, to increase walking and biking facilities to public schools. So I'm hopeful that, I expect that there's going to be testimony tonight, and because council reports come before reports in the public, I'm taking my opportunity now to say I hope that I will hear some concern from those people who would prefer that the road not be closed, to speak as to how they would solve this problem and at what cost. So with that, I'm looking forward to hearing testimony tonight on Lower Cascades during the open public reports. But I hope that we make more of an effort. I've spent a lot of my career trying to represent people who we don't normally hear from, who don't normally come to these meetings, but who are just as much citizens as anybody else. And the citizens I'm concerned about now that are represented by that resolution are people who either all but don't speak before us, or who are told that it's not their place to speak before us. So, and now I'm not even talking about college students, I'm talking about high school students. So I hope that we're going to be keeping their concerns in mind as well as everyone else's. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
No report tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
No report. Thank you.
Councilmember Rallo? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
No report.
And Councilmember Sims?
No.
And I have no report this evening either. So with that, let's go to reports from the mayor and city offices, beginning with a report on the 2023 Community Survey. I believe Deputy Mayor Carmichael will be starting us off.
Good evening, Councilwoman. Deputy Mayor Mary Catherine Carmichael, for two more days. Nice to be with you this evening. It's my pleasure to introduce Jade Achoa, who will be with us this evening, to give you the report on the fourth City of Bloomington City Survey. I'll give you a little background for context. The City of Bloomington contracted with Polco National Research Center to conduct a community-wide survey. The 2023 survey was the fourth iteration of the survey in the City of Bloomington. The primary goal for the survey was to assess the attitudes and opinions of residents by four things: determining general perception of quality of life in the city, evaluating city programs and services, identifying projects or issues for the city, and setting benchmarks for future surveys. The City of Bloomington Community Survey serves as a consumer report card for Bloomington by providing residents the opportunity to rate many aspects of life in the city. Focus on the quality of service delivery can help council, staff, and the public to set priorities for budget decisions and lays the groundwork for tracking community opinions about the core responsibilities of Bloomington City Government, helping to assure maximum service quality over time. Not only does this survey work to understand overall quality of life, but it also gets at key services that local government control to create a quality community. It's akin to private sector customer service surveys that are used regularly by many corporations to monitor where there are weaknesses in product or service delivery before customers defect to competition or before other problems form from dissatisfied customers' use. So with that, I will introduce Jade Achoa from Polco. She'll give the report on the report. Thank you.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Is there a way we can get a visual of Ms. Achoa? Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Arocha. And I am screen sharing. Are you all able to see the slides?
There. I see you. I see you now. So thank you. Please go ahead.
Sure. Thank you so much for having me this evening, mayor and members of council. My name is Jade Arocha. I am the Director of Survey Research for Polco, and I'm very pleased to be here this evening to present the results of the 2023 Resident Survey to you all. Just a little bit about us before we dive into the results. Polco and National Research Center are two different companies that merged back in 2019. National Research Center has long been providing statistically valid government, local government surveys for about 30 years all across the country. We have headquarters in both Middleton, Wisconsin, and Boulder, Colorado. And then Polco adds to that survey research aspect of our company a public engagement online format so that residents can interact with their local governments on the city's platform. I will be talking more about that shortly. We do have a benchmarking database as well. So this database, which I will also be referring to, the benchmarks throughout the rest of this presentation, allow us to provide context for your ratings as they relate to ratings from other communities across the country. Currently, this database contains results from more than 500 communities across the nation. And I'll be referring to Bloomington's results as either higher, lower, or similar to the benchmarks, with the difference there being at least a 10-point difference from the average rating will indicate being higher or lower than the benchmark. I do want to cover the survey methods before we get into the results themselves. So this was the fourth time that Bloomington has conducted the Resident Survey, with previous administrations in 2017, 2019, and 2021. The 2023 survey was conducted this year from March 20th to May 1st, and we employ what we call a multi-contact approach. We first mail a pre-notification postcard, this is a half-page-sized postcard, that invites residents to complete the survey, and then it contains a web link so that residents can access the survey online if they prefer. A week later, we follow up with a survey packet that contains the printed paper survey as well as a cover letter with instructions and a postage-paid return envelope. And then one week after that, we follow up with a final reminder postcard to invite further online response. All of those materials have a web link included. And we sent that series of mailings to 3,000 randomly selected households in the City of Bloomington. The, all of the materials were available in both English and Spanish, and the survey was available online in Spanish as well. With, from those 3,000 households, we received a total of 367 responses for an overall response rate of 13% and an overall margin of error of plus or minus 5%, which is our goal as survey researchers, is 5% or less. We also tracked responses by, we tracked geographic areas as well in the mailings, and I'll be talking a little bit more about that later in the presentation. But by geographic area, response rates ranged from 9% to 17%, and again, 13% overall for the entire city. Getting now to an overview, the overview of the survey results themselves. So just a high-level overview of your, the comparison of yours to our national benchmarks, of the 89 items for which comparisons were available. 50 of those were similar to the national average. Eight were rated higher, and then 31 were lower. Again, I'll be covering these in more detail as we get into the different key findings later in this slide up. And then Bloomington also elected to include comparison to a subset of communities from our benchmark database of peer communities. These were communities that were also college towns that contain universities and also had similar median annual household incomes to that of Bloomington. And from that subset of the 89 items that we could make comparisons for, 67 were similar, seven were higher, and 15 were lower. And then finally, when we look at comparisons to the most recent previous survey iteration in 2021, we saw that 74 items were similar, 26 items increased in ratings with a statistically significant increase in ratings, and then 71 were lower. Okay, I'm getting into the key findings now. Our first key finding, Bloomington residents continue to have a positive quality of life. Though about three-quarters of respondents rated the overall quality of life in the city as excellent or good in 2023, and similarly, about the same proportion of residents viewed Bloomington as a place to live favorably. And then about 7 in 10 gave excellent or good ratings to the city as a place to raise children and as a place to visit, 6 in 10 to their neighborhood as a place to live, and roughly half to Bloomington as a place to work and to retire. Bloomington as a place to grow a business that received excellent or good ratings from 39% of residents. These ratings tended to be similar to the benchmarks where available. Bloomington as a place to grow a business, for example. As you go through and review the data on your own in the full report, not all of these questions are benchmarkable. We don't, and Bloomington as a place to grow a business, as an example, is not one that we could provide benchmarks for. The rest of these on this slide, though, Bloomington tended to be similar to benchmark comparisons. When asked if they would recommend living in Bloomington to someone who asked, seven in 10 residents indicated that they were very or somewhat likely to do so, and six in 10 residents were likely, were very or somewhat likely to remain in Bloomington for the next five years. These were also on par with national and peer comparison communities. Our second key finding, overall opportunities for education contribute to the quality of life in Bloomington. So the survey asks about a number of broad community characteristics as in past years. And so we've displayed the this year's survey data as well as the 2021 survey data side by side here. So when rating the set of eight community characteristics, about eight in 10 gave positive ratings to overall opportunities for education and enrichment and the quality of the overall natural environment in Bloomington. Generally speaking, ratings related to education and enrichment, adult educational opportunities, et cetera, tended to be above average ratings in Bloomington. Moving on, the overall image or reputation of Bloomington, health and wellness opportunities, and overall ease of getting to the places they usually visit were rated positively by at least six in 10. We can see some declines there year over year in those three items. Sense of community, overall built environment, and overall economic health were rated positively by at least half of residents. And then overall built environment, that rating also declined from the previous survey in 2021. When asked to select from a list the one thing that they liked most about living in the City of Bloomington, 18% of respondents indicated that they were pleased with the access to educational opportunities into the university, and this was the most commonly selected response option. 14% chose the sense of community and small-town feel, and a similar proportion selected that it was beautiful or the appearance of the city and that it was eco-friendly. And then about 1 in 10 selected either cultural activities and entertainment, the people, or that it's a friendly place, and then everything, and that it's a great place to live. There's also another category for other responses for those that selected something other than what was included in the list. Key finding number three, homelessness remains a city challenge. Residents were also asked to indicate what is one thing that they liked least about this Bloomington. And so about half of respondents here in this question mentioned in the last, were housing or homelessness. Sorry, combined half, so 25% on affordable housing and homelessness, 22%. 16% mentioned roads, traffic, or public transportation. So those three rose to the top, as far as the top three categories that were mentioned by residents. One in 10 also mentioned that they were unhappy with development or government, topics related to government such as politics, trust, or decision-making. There was a question posed about challenges posed by homelessness. To what degree, if at all, do you think homelessness is a challenge in the City of Bloomington? And we can see, this is, this question has been asked since, every year since 2017. And we can see some variation here year over year. Compared from 2023, results were similar to those seen in 2021. Roughly seven in 10 considered it a major challenge in both of those years, which was an increase from previous years. Our fourth key finding, some safety-related ratings have decreased since 2021. I will also mention here, this key finding and the previous one on homelessness. I do want to briefly say that as someone who gives a lot of these presentations across the country, we have seen nationwide trends going downward in both of these areas where our clients ask about safety-related questions or homelessness. So I did want to provide that context, that particularly in the last two years, since really in the post-COVID era, this is something that we have seen pretty broadly in most communities where we survey. With that said, looking at these safety-related ratings in more detail, residents were asked to indicate how safe or unsafe they felt in their neighborhoods during the day, in Bloomington's downtown area during the day, in their neighborhood at night, and in Bloomington's downtown area at night. Feelings of safety declined in all of these categories except for in their neighborhood during the day. Residents were also asked to rate a number of safety-related services in Bloomington, and some of these experienced declines as well. So roughly nine in 10 gave positive ratings to fire services and emergency medical services, 74% to animal control, 68% to fire prevention and education. And then we saw declines this year. 40%, 46% excellent or good in police services, and 38% in crime prevention. Comparatively, in 2021, the rating for police services was 60%. And for crime prevention, it was 54% in 2021. Both of these were also lower than the national and peer community benchmarks. Key finding number five, community engagement in Bloomington remains high. So residents were asked how often they participated in different activities in the city. And residents were most likely to have talked to or visited with neighbors. 88% of residents reported doing so, which was a significant increase from 2021. Bloomington residents were also more likely than those who live in other communities to have walked or biked instead of driving. About three-quarters of respondents reporting that they had done this in the last year. And then we can see in declining order, about six in 10 had done a favor for a neighbor, carpooling with other adults or children instead of driving alone, or had attended an event offered by the City of Bloomington. And about half of residents or less had indicated that they had participated in many activities here. The green stars also denote where participation ratings were higher than both the national and peer community benchmark sets. So that was, again, walked or biked instead of driving, carpooling, and also using a bus or other public transportation instead of driving. Key finding number six, citywide high-speed internet access is a problem. So about three-quarters of respondents said that taking steps to assure high-speed internet access for all households in Bloomington, regardless of income, was very important or important. Also, looking at project prioritization on the right, we can see that about six in 10 rated as essential or very important, citywide high-speed fiber for internet access. And then, which was at the top of the list for project prioritization of this question, followed by different development projects, and then also distant last place at 18% expansion of the Bloomington and Monroe County Convention Center. Key finding number seven, while ratings for government performance have declined, residents are highly satisfied with Bloomington City staff. So we ask about different satisfaction with different levels of government here, from the city level, county, state, and federal. And we can see that residents are most pleased with the services provided by the City of Bloomington. 62% reported excellent or good ratings here. Monroe County was added as a new level of government in 2023, so we don't have a prior-year comparison there. But we can see also that ratings for state government and federal level of government also declined year over year as well. And we also asked about a number of aspects of local government performance on the survey and have since the inception of this survey. So at the top of the list in terms of overall ratings, the Job City Government does it well for citizen involvement. This was a similar rating to that given in 2021. We can also see declines in most of these other categories as well. These were, tended to be similar to the benchmark comparisons other than those that are marked with the green arrow there, the overall direction that the city is taking, and treating all residents fairly. Those were lower than the peer benchmark comparisons. Similarly to what I said before about nationwide trends relating to homelessness and also to safety, government performance, we have also seen this downward trend here as well, again, in this post-COVID era. And while we can't exactly, we like to say that a survey can tell you what people think, but not why they think it. Based on some of the research that we have done into this trend, what we have seen is that most residents tended to give more positive ratings to their local governments during the pandemic. during the pandemic, particularly at the height of the pandemic. And then we've seen ratings sort of return to baseline after, as things sort of return to normal. Residents were asked if they had contacted city of Bloomington staff in the past twelve months. About one-third had, and about two-thirds had not. Those who had contact were asked about their impression of their contact with staff. And these ratings actually improved in 2023 for the courteousness, knowledge, responsiveness of the person that they had contacted, as well as their overall impression of that customer communication. That is a summary of our, high-level summary of our key findings. And then, these were already covered in the introduction to the survey, but just things to consider as you dig deeper into the full report and to review the findings on your own. What areas were surprising, where should you dig deeper, and where would you like to focus more? And at the beginning of this presentation, I mentioned our resident engagement platform on Polco, and so this is another way in which you can continue to engage your residents and continue with the past question sets that might dig deeper into some of these topics where you might want to understand more about the why of what your residents have have given ratings for, in addition to just the what. And access to this online component of the project is already included in the costs that you paid for the 2023 survey. Happy to take questions at this time. I know that was a lot of key findings in a rather short amount of time. Happy to go back through any slides as well.
Thank you very much for that report. We are at twenty minutes, which is the limit for this section. We're obviously going to need to extend that because we have a whole nother report to do. Is it council's desire to ask questions now or to hold those questions and submit them in writing? I hear no opinions. Is, Councilmember Volan?
Questions. I don't know if anybody else does.
I'm seeing a couple of questions. Let's may I have a motion to extend this period of time, this?
I move that we extend by, how much time do you need?
To include Lower Cascades, let's say till at least seven-thirty.
I'll move to extend to seven-thirty.
Deputy Clerk McDowell, will you please call the role on the motion to extend?
Member Rosenbarger? Yes. Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that was everybody, and that passes, so time is extended for this section till seven-thirty. Councilmember Volan, please go ahead with your questions.
Quick questions. Thanks for the presentation, by the way. If the top two ratings for any given question were excellent and good, what were the other options?
Question, excellent, good, fair, and four is our traditional response scale.
Just not five, it's four different choices.
And also a don't-know option.
Okay.
For most of the questions.
Also, you, our peer communities were ones that had large universities, is that the idea?
Yeah, college towns, and then also median household income. Similar median household income was also added as a second parameter there.
How did you, did students on campus or near campus get polled as a result of this survey?
Another good question. Our sampling methods do include students that live off-campus because they are just included as part of the random sample. We don't include dorm residing students for various reasons, but primarily because they tend to respond at extremely low rates, and it is typically not worth the added cost to try to reach or engage with those students.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims, and then Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Thank you. Thank you for the report, Ms. Rocha. Hope I pronounced that correctly. And I just have one question that I just want to be clear. Maybe I misheard or misread, I don't know. But I think you stated that Polco represents fifty million respondents. Is that over the nation?
Yes, so what that, the number there is, out of the five hundred communities that are in our database, that is extrapolating the populations of those, of those communities, and so that's where that number comes from.
Okay, thank you. And as, with regard to our survey, is it correct that three thousand households were contacted and there were three hundred and sixty-seven responses?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and I don't have a reason at this point to dispute or disagree with those findings. I guess what I'm really wanting to know is, how were those responses statistically weighted so that they reflect the entire Bloomington population? Can you explain that to us, how that happened? How three hundred and sixty-seven people can? Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, great question. So with regard to weighting, we do ask a series of demographic questions on the survey, which map to the US Census. So then we use census data to to identify what we call the population norm for Bloomington, so who actually lives in the community. And then we evaluate who we heard from, which is called the unweighted data. And then we use statistical analysis programs, in our case, we use SPSS, to statistically weight the data, which then essentially performs adjustments to the data to make it more representative of your residents and accounts for any discrepancies. For example, older residents tend to respond to surveys at higher rates than younger residents. So the weighting process makes adjustments for that. This is a very pivotal part of the gold standard survey industry process. Weighting, unweighted data or raw data are not the data to refer to. The weighted data is definitely what you want to consider as your representative information.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, of those three sixty-seven, do those reflect, or do you have records that reflect income differences between those respondents and/or racial and social and cultural differences? So of those three sixty-seven, you have an idea of which demographic group those responses came from?
Yes, we do. So each, each respondent does respond to those demographic questions. So you can see both the, the number of respondents by demographic characteristics in the appendix of the report that shows that information. Also, we provide cross-tabulations by demographic characteristics as well and that do show statistically, statistically significant differences in opinion by different demographics. That's also included in the report. We didn't get into that level of detail here due to, in the interest of time, but that is included in the report.
No, that's fine. I'll look into it a little bit more later, because I'd like to know this, and particularly the statistically weighted, how we can flip that to reflect eighty thousand people. But thank you so much for the report, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I just wanted to know when and where the full report will be available.
The report has already been delivered to city staff.
Jay, I'll take this one. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Mary Catherine Carmichael will have everything posted online, not just, starting tomorrow morning, not just the 2023 report, but all four reports, as well as the presentations that went along with them. So they're openly available to anyone who'd like to access them. And it will be right on the front landing page. We'll do a press release in the morning that will then have the links handy, so they'll be right at the top. So it's a quick find. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Ms. Carmichael, Ms. Rocha, thank you so much. We appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Since this is my last opportunity to address council as your deputy mayor, I thank you for the opportunity to have worked with each one of you. I've learned something from each of you over time, and it's been a pleasure, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan?
We were just going to, at least, I know Councilmember Smith and I were going to thank you for your years of service. We appreciate your service to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. We move next to a report on Old State Road Thirty-Seven and Lower Cascades Park multi-use path alternatives. We have Mr. Robinson with us, I believe.
Good evening. My name is Scott Robinson. I'm the director for planning and transportation. I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to provide a report tonight regarding Lower Cascades and Old State Road Thirty-Seven. On the screen above, you can see an image, a screen capture of the area that I'd like to talk about tonight. I'm loosely referring to that as the Cascades Network. I have some neighborhoods highlighted, parks, some destinations, schools, to give you context. As you know, in the council packet, I included a memo that outlines policies, the recent twenty-year history of the area, issues, and alternative design solutions and options to consider. I also wanted to point out Councilmember Flaherty and Councilmember Volan for pointing out Resolution nineteen-eleven that I failed to include in that list, recognizing the need to increase walking and biking facilities to our public schools. Mr. Lucas, could you click the, thank you, next part there? I highlighted on the legend here, multi-use path. And so what I want to highlight is on the, the network, you can see a lot of these green lines in the area. One of the challenges that we have as staff is, once we have these adopted plans and policies, is how do we implement these? Typically, when we go through this process, implementation is the next step. Generally, after these plans and policies are adopted, we start focusing on implementation, which delves into design, and then construction and maintenance of these facilities. Some of the questions that arise during that process is feasibility. A line in the map is something much different than ground-truthing on the ground. Prioritization, where does this fall in the prioritization of all the facilities identified in these plans for the community? Sometimes it's identified in these plans as a priority, sometimes it's prioritized by past and prior investments, it's the logical next step. Funding sources, that's something that we struggle with all the time, trying to identify various funding resources to leverage these investments coming before council on these budgetary requests and approvals for these next steps. Next slide, please. Now I just want to provide a little background on what's existing on the ground today. So on the map, you can see I've taken the same green lines and converted them to other colors. The red lines, North Dunn and Kinzer Street, are areas of this network that are in design. That's where we've had prior funding or committed funding to move into the design phase of this network. The navy blue or dark blue section are portions of the network that have been constructed with prior design and investments in that area. And then the last segment, the yellow segment, is the portion that we're discussing about tonight. It's a key missing link in the network. It obviously provides access from the south into the Lower Cascades Network. The designed portions, the red portions, provide someday access from the east and north into the Cascades area. The dashed yellow lines, if you, Mr. Lucas, press the button, you'll see that they'll highlight rotation around the network. I'm going to provide a short video to provide an aerial view, fly over the area to give a perspective of the various attributes of the corridors. So it begins from the North Dunn Street, proceeds north and follows around. So if you bear with me for about four minutes and thirty seconds, you can get a nice flyover of the network to give a context. Thank you. Well, I hope this video demonstrates Bloomington's natural assets, both, how both residents and visitors can enjoy, and someday through an inclusive multimodal vision, to connect our various destinations and assets in our community. On the next slide, Mr. Lucas, can you click to highlight the? I wanted to provide some pavement widths. This is the edge-of-pavement-to-edge-of-pavement approximate. The yellow pentagons demonstrate the approximate pavement width on the network that we're looking at. As you can see, there's very little opportunity to use the shoulder of the road, what have you, on the corridor or the network. And so again, I just wanted to provide a little bit of context. Maybe you observed that through that flyover. There are many portions of the network that there's not a lot of room. In fact, some areas, the side path or trail is off the actual, not next to the road, but actually a little bit offset off the roadway. Can you click the next, please? I wanted to provide some recent traffic counts. Again, this is just a snapshot in time. These were taken in June of this year. On each leg of the network, you can see the average daily traffic, that's ADT and average speed. So you can see on the southern leg, there's about four hundred and seventy-two vehicles. This is weekday traffic compared to seven hundred on the two northern legs. What that data suggests is most of the traffic that you see going through the southern leg is through traffic. It's not destination traffic going to the park. And actually, we're seeing more vehicles. And actually, we're seeing more vehicles taking the northern route through the park and over to Kinzer Pike, vice versa. I will say that these counts do include bicyclists. We approximate, these approximately capture about 30 bikes a day, 36 bikes a day in this period. I will say a prior count, right after the pilot was closed and the road reopened with the traffic calming, there was some game day traffic taken where actually on game day, the ADT, the average daily traffic, was less than the prior Saturday. Not significantly less, but again, less, all less than these average weekday traffic numbers. I do want to kind of highlight the graphics up in the upper right. These are captures, screen captures from our transportation plan, kind of policy guidance. On the left, you have a multi-use path that gives a cross-section of a typical roadway with a little tree lawn or buffer, and then the multi-use path. That's basically what's identified for what we would be doing in the Cascades Network. And on the right is a little infographic on how we try to prioritize pedestrian, bicyclist transit, and then motor vehicles. In the memo, I outlined four possible alternatives to consider for this southern piece of the network. The first is kind of a no-build opportunity. If that were the decision to move forward with, we would need to amend our comprehensive and transportation plans to remove that guidance, that policy guidance, to implement that type of infrastructure in this portion of the roadway. And we would need to build a sidewalk in order to provide accessibility to one of our destinations. Second is, option would be a new trail or separated trail from the roadway. Councilmember Volin mentioned the $3 million price tag. That's a very general estimate, but until we get into the design phase, this would be by far the most expensive alternative to consider in this section of road. Primarily, there's very limited road width to work with because of the close proximity of the stream bank, the steep slopes, and the trees. So this would by and far be the most expensive alternative to consider. The other alternative is something that we looked back some time ago in the past about, could we convert the road to a one-way road where a portion of the road could serve as a trail? That's another alternative to consider. That one has its challenges, too. Primarily, which direction of flow would the traffic be for the one-way traffic? The road would need to be widened in order to accommodate both the trail and a one-way road. Feasibility, I'm not sure if we have enough width to be able to do that. And then the last, fourth option, is the roadway conversion. Again, where this section of road would be converted to a trail. Access to the all other amenities in this area would still be accessible via automobile, bike, and ped, what have you. This section, again, would be evaluated and designed to be closed and converted. Where that, where those points of closure would be, would be determined at a later point. I do want to point out that all of these considerations, we need to be mindful of the stream-side stabilization that needs to take place along the corridor here. We need to coordinate with IMI, the concrete facility just north of the bypass. There may be utility upgrades needed along the corridor. All of these will meet ADA compliance for accessibility standards. I will say that there might be federal funding limitations depending on which alternative is chosen. Not impossible, but anytime you impact a park, anytime you're close to streams, there might be some historic factors. Definitely raise some red flags when using federal funding, so that might limit our options when considering funding opportunities moving forward. Next slide. I just wanted to provide a little context. As you all know, we had the pilot study where we had closed, temporarily closed, the road. And then there was a June 2011 storm event that actually washed out a portion of the roadway. Obviously, you know, as part of climate action and stream bank stabilization, that's something that we need to be mindful of. I think it's, without saying much, to point out that it's clear guidance, policy guidance from the city about climate action. As you can see, the storm really did damage the roadway, the portion of roadway was being considered. At the time when this pilot came to an end, the decision was to reopen the road and install traffic calming features. That was not a permanent decision. That was a temporary decision. These improvements are not consistent with our plans and policies. It was an interim step, and it does not meet the various needs and challenges that are before us. Next slide, please. Finally, the administration recommends the roadway conversion to a multi-use trail. This alternative does not change accessible parking areas and access to facilities within the park. It has the most potential to minimize environmental impacts. It is the most cost-effective solution, possibly save $3 million compared to other alternatives, and it is inclusive and consistent with ADA access. I'm seeking feedback from council members. Tell us what you think. Tell me what you think. I'll follow up with each of you individually to hear more. This way, a decision can be made on behalf of the entire community, and the administration can follow up with a preferred alternative. I thank you for your time. I think I'm within my time limit. I certainly have an opportunity to answer a few questions. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. We have a few minutes left for questions, and then, as you pointed out, you'll be reaching out to us as well. Questions from council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Robinson. If the road were to be closed to car traffic, is there a way to enable emergency vehicles to still use the road in case of emergency?
Yeah, I don't see how that's any different than what we do now with the Beeline Trail and other facilities, access to Switchyard Park and what have you. Again, there's been no designs. We haven't gotten into the design, but I don't see why a design couldn't incorporate access for emergency vehicles.
How does that work in the other facilities that you mentioned?
I'm not particularly aware of, but I know like with the Beeline Trail, for example, the emergency vehicles drive on the trail.
So the, any barriers could be removable, or how, like Kirkwood Avenue, for example, during the summer when we close off part of the street?
Right. Again, without getting into the designs, I don't know what that design solution would be. I think, you know, the emergency services folks would probably prefer not to have a barrier in the place that they'd have to get out and remove, but that doesn't mean that there aren't design options out there to consider for that.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would point that there are many other parks and areas in the community that are not accessible by, you know, every point of every park is accessible by emergency vehicle. They find a way, and they'll get there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? If not, I'll take a turn. Councilmember Volin.
First of all, I want to say I'm sorry I did address this issue during reports when it was on the agenda. That's my bad. But I did want to ask, when you say that this plan is ADA compliant, the closure of the road, I think people who are in wheelchairs and use a specialized car to get around might say that it's not accessible to them because they can't get their specialized car or van through. Can you explain a little bit more detail what it means to be ADA compliant in this case?
So ADA compliance is meaning with American Disabilities Act, or whatever facility we design would need to be compliant with those standards? I'm not 100% sure, but I don't think ADA compliance addresses access and mobility through a motorized vehicle. What it does address is how you access ADA parking spaces and other facilities. So that, with that said, I'm not aware of, the ADA would require a roadway to be open to motorized vehicles. Now, motorized wheelchairs, assisted, other devices that would be, they would be designed to accommodate those types of loads.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are at 7:30. Councilmember Smith, do you have a quick question?
No, I have a couple of questions.
Do we wish to extend this time, council? Or do you wish to follow up individually?
Five minutes for Councilmember Smith.
Second. And we need a roll call vote on the motion to extend. Council, or Deputy Clerk McDowell.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Thank you, and thanks for the report and all that you do. I've had some constituents reach out and say that they're being told that the road has to be closed because it's in the transportation plan. And it's really not in the transportation plan to close specifically Lower Cascades. Would you clarify that or comment on that?
Yeah, great answer. Thank you. A question, Councilmember Smith. There's nothing in the plan that says the road shall be closed. It's really looking at the feasibility aspect. So whenever we move into that feasibility, these are considerations that we consider in any project that we move forward with. And again, given the constraints of this portion of roadway, it's pretty challenging. And so this would be one alternative to consider.
Thank you for clarifying that. And the other question I had was, after this came up last year, we all voted it down. So I get confused, like, it comes back because, why is it coming back now, again?
Can you clarify on the voting down, please? Councilmember Smith?
Well, was it last year? Didn't we bring this, talk about closing the street, Lower Cascades, last year?
I don't believe it was before council before. It was brought to the Parks Board and Board of Public Works regarding the improvements to reopen the road and address the damage by the storm, to fortify the road. In fact, the video, you can see some of the gabion baskets and improvements.
There was a pilot, was there a pilot closure for a while?
There was a pilot closure, I believe, that happened right about when the pandemic started. So that was a temporary pilot in that time, yes.
And that went away, but there was lots of controversy, and the public generally didn't really want it closed then, right?
I'm not going to comment on the, you know, what the public says. I mean, I think we all have heard different conversations. Again, it was a pilot study. The intent of a pilot is to be temporary in nature.
Was there a conclusion to the pilot? I mean, like, what the upshot of it was, once it was closed and then the city reopened it? What was the, was there a conclusion?
A conclusion of the pilot? I'm not aware of any kind of bona fide conclusion at the time, and there hasn't been a follow-up discussion about, hey, what do you think about the current improvements being made? Again, that's why I'm before you this evening, is to get your feedback on the appropriate steps to move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? In the minute we have left? If not, I'll take, if this is, oh, sorry. Councilmember Flaherty, and then if we have time, Councilmember Rosenbarger, unless we extend again. Councilmember Flaherty, go ahead.
Thank you. Two quick ones. One, just confirming from that exchange, the council has never considered or voted on what facility should be in Lower Cascades Park. Is that right?
Councilmember Flaherty, to my knowledge, it is. What has been approved by council is the comprehensive plan and transportation plan, which identified this facility here.
Okay. Thank you. And then second follow-up is, should we expect a resolution or similar coming from the administration to make a recommendation about appropriation and a policy course going forward? Or is that something you would like the council to develop?
Well, as part of my outreach to each of you, I'd like to get feedback from council members and community members on the best pathway forward. The administration is supportive of that feedback. We want this to be a community decision so that that decision could be made, and at that time, the administration can prepare whatever that would, whatever that would take. Is it a budget request for funding? Would it be a resolution? I think the challenge is with a resolution, depending on the facility type, other than, I guess there's really not an ordinance that would close the road, or an ordinance that would trigger one of the recommendations or alternatives. A resolution might provide a direction on a preferred alternative. Again, with that feedback, certainly willing to work with everybody to arrive at that preferred outcome.
Right. I think that's what I was thinking, the last thing you described. So, thank you.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Hi. Very quick question. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. I just want to clarify, you said the ADP for a game day traffic was less than the Saturday before that? Is that correct?
Yeah, it, again, it's just a snapshot. It was a game in November, so, you know, I think that point in time in the Hoosier football era was probably not a very popular game. So I'll just be honest about that outcome. But yes, the daily traffic was actually less than the prior Saturday. So, you know, given the concerns with the traffic management, it was a little bit interesting to see that. And it was just right after the roadway was opened after the pilot. So just a snapshot in time, I wouldn't put too much weight one way or the other on it, but it is an interesting fact that we didn't really, there wasn't any noticeable change in the game day traffic for a football game.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us a little past our time. Mr. Robinson, thank you very much for this report. We look forward to talking with you individually in the coming weeks, coming days.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to reports from council committees. Are there any? I'm not aware of any. Okay. And this brings us to our first period of public comment. I'm aware that there are a lot of people here who want to offer comment. This is for items not on the agenda as legislative items. So if you have comments on the hazards of artificial intelligence, or the accessible transportation and mobility principles, for example, we'll take comments at that time when we take up those particular issues. So with that, Mr. Lucas, while you extend our invitation on Zoom, could I have a show of hands of those in council chambers who would like to offer comment? 11, and Mr. Lucas, go ahead.
Yes, if there are members of the public joining us via Zoom that would like to speak, please let us know by using the raise hand feature. You can find that in your control bar by clicking the reactions button or the more button. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak. I see one hand raised at the moment.
Okay. I'm sorry? Councilmember Volin?
To extend public comment, but I don't really have a recommendation for how long to extend it.
Why don't we revisit that at 20 minutes? And we'll have a sense of how far we are in the queue. So, all right, I'll invite those who are interested in making public comment to please begin queuing up at the microphone. Mr. Lucas, do we have more on Zoom? I'm just trying to calibrate here.
Still just one at the moment.
Just one at the moment? Let's plan on three minutes per person. We have a lot of people that we want to hear from this evening. So if you would queue up, please. And then when you come to the, for those of you, some of you are new to making public comments, so when you come to the podium, you'll have an opportunity to sign in. So there is a sign-in sheet there, Mr. Lucas, I assume. Please sign in your name, so our clerk can properly reflect you in the minutes. Please state your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes to make your comment. You'll see timers up on the screen to help you calibrate your comments and pace yourself. So with that, let's begin here in chambers. Please, welcome. Please state your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Daryl Rubel. Got a couple of comments. Keep Cascades open. Open Kirkwood, that should never be closed. That's Main Thoroughfare, man. That's my cruising road. I love that road. It's a nice street. Please reopen Kirkwood. I know it's closed, but yeah, whatever. You know? But Rogers and Allen, you know, they put that thing in the middle of the road at Rogers and Allen a few years ago, and they was back there a month ago redoing it. Why? Why was, why was them guys back out there doing something again? Why wasn't that designed right the first time? Why was they back again? More taxpayer money? Had 10 guys out there all week redoing that when it should have been done right the first time? It needs to be eliminated. I don't like it. But the money that was wasted on that thing, and then down Allen Street from Rogers to Patterson... Patterson, them things that are coming down the road, man, that's going to be heck to pay when you got plow truck drivers in the wintertime that's got snows a foot deep and they hit them things in plows. Them things are about $10,000 a piece in plows, and they hit them things. Anyway. Duke Energy, thank you guys for getting my lights back on when the lights went out a while back. I don't remember the date. Them are the guys that Matt Flaherty has forgot about when he says he needs to retain the people at the mill. We need to retain the people at Duke Energy, the people that drive backhoes, the people that cut trees. He was so intent on the mill. Oh, we got to retain them people. Okay, you can retain them, but we need to keep the people that keep our lights on, too. I was real glad to have them lights come back on. Mine was off for about eight hours. And then when they come on, then they went back off and it started raining. I thought, man, them guys are the heroes, man. Got them back on. I appreciate that. Thank you, guys, all that. Seventh Street, this thing over here from Walnut to Rogers, man, that should have its four-way stops back. That's very confusing for people. I'm surprised there's not been T-bones out here. Why was that designed? It's confusing every time you pull onto that from any road around here. It's confusing. Thanks to WPA, the guys from the old days that done all the work around Bloomington, that made Bloomington. Them guys built some good stuff, man. Them guys built some stuff that made to last for hundreds of years. They really did. Rose Hill Cemetery, the wall around here, I'm always talking about, but WPA guys, my hat's off to you guys. You're not here to see my thanks, but thank you. And also, too, I had interactions with Bloomington Police last week. I don't have it all the time, but when I do, most of it are good. Sergeant Lucas treated me with great care. Officer Dormand was a thug, intimidated me, treated me really bad. I don't appreciate that. He makes police officers look bad in Bloomington, Officer Dormand.
Mr. Rubel, thanks for your comments. You're at your time. Okay, Mr. Lucas, let's go while the next person is signing in. Let's go to Zoom.
Yes, we have Dave Huber.
Huber, welcome. I believe, am I correct that you have some slides to share as well?
Yes, that is correct.
And Mr. Lucas, do we have those? Okay. Once those slides are up, Mr. Huber, you'll have three minutes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, well, just a quick day for you all, partnership with Downtown Bloomington Inc. a few months ago, and just want to share with you all the findings from it. So, to answer all this question, how might we move our downtown? Next slide, please. It was great to see that. Oh, what do residents want? And so that's what we did. We had 36, next slide, please. Thirty-six participants come to the Downtown Strategic Innovation Workshop in February. Keep going. As I said, we had 36 participants. Next slide, next slide. We'll move quickly here. Present nice, diverse perspectives of stakeholders in downtown Bloomington and across the city. Keep going. Ideating on new ideas to make downtown. Slide. Objective, way with.
Did we lose audio?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Great. Yeah, next slide, please. To walk away with actionable ideas to tend to bring the most value to the people coming downtown. And this was over four sessions, over four months. Next slide, please. If you don't think you can look ahead on these slides, just follow up. Yeah, thanks. And next slide, we had a showcase on June 2nd. There we go. That's a map of everything that was downtown during a gallery walk. And if you just flip through the next five slides pretty quickly, you'll see some photos from the event. For this registration, people in the alley activation, that was one of the big ideas, was activating alleys, music on the square. And again, the whole objective here is what are some small things we can do to make downtown even better. One of them was musicians busking, supporting musicians having a more clear, easy ways to busk. And keep going. And we'll get to the final list here. So these are the top six ideas. There's a link to a video here if you want to see what it looked like day of. It was a great day. It's linked in the PDA app. That should be in your packet. Next slide, we gave a certificate to all the citizen residents who participated. Next slide, here's a photo of a handful of us. And most importantly, let's get to the survey results. So somewhat similar, we want to know what stations were your favorite ideas? Next slide. So we asked, so again, we had six ideas that the participants came up in the innovation workshop. We put on a live downtown showcase to put a prototype in front of residents and then surveyed them. Hey, which of these ideas do you like? And as you see here, the alley activation and the downtown busking were the top two ideas, followed closely by live entertainment on the square. Next slide, we asked, to what extent would you like to see the city invest in making these ideas happen more often? Eighty-seven percent said very much so. Next slide. And finally, here, how to seeing potential innovations like this influence your perspective on Bloomington. Seventeen percent, thirty-six percent said makes me want to live here longer. Fifty-seven percent said makes me more likely to recommend Bloomington as a place to live. Sixty-eight percent said makes me want to come downtown more often. And fifty-seven percent said makes me want to support small businesses more often. So just kind of an FYI for you all from the outcomes from this. I think one takeaway could be seeing those top two ideas move forward, which I believe Holly Warren is already working on. So that's great affirmation. And I think this mindset of continuing to prototype and test ideas and get feedback in a cheap and fast way is something that I was hoping would be bring insights to DBI and other people in the city. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Huber. Let's come back here in chamber. Actually, Mr. Lucas, just to check myself, do we have others on Zoom with hands raised or no?
Not at the moment, no.
Okay, let's come back to chambers. Welcome. Please share your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Yes, I'm David Canfield, resident of Bloomington since 1974. And I come here to speak against the closure of Cascades Road. Bloomington is a growing city. As anybody who looks around and sees the apartment buildings going up in any direction that you look can be well aware. And I doubt there's anybody in this room or watching this that also hasn't noticed the significant increase in traffic over the last five or 10 years just driving around during non-rush hour times. And so what we need is not fewer roads to access from one point to another, but more. I don't know where you can put them, but we don't need to be closing roads. Not everything is equal, though, amongst the various residents of Bloomington and their accessibility to emergency vehicles. I've got a map today that I've highlighted in yellow that shows those of us who live in the yellow area have less access to emergency vehicles than most of the citizens of Bloomington do. That's because, once you get south of the bypass, there's far more north-south corridors, even small streets that go north and south. Above the bypass, there's only a few, very few, that go north and south. There are a minimum of 1,500 people, and probably quite a few more, that live in this yellow indicated area, including the people in Blue Ridge, Fritz Terrace, Northwood Estates, Marlin Hills, and other additions that I probably don't even know about. I'm here to point out that we who live in the northern part of Bloomington, in this yellow area, deserve equal access to that which is experienced by those in the other parts of city. On game days or graduations, these services would take, the emergency services would take considerably more time when precious seconds count to get ambulances to anyone who is suffering a heart attack, a stroke, a choking child, a home that's on fire, or any other emergency that where time is of essence. With this many people in that area, it's only a matter of time that someone is going to become seriously ill needing quick treatment in this yellow area that is going to be, is going to die because of the extra time that it gets, takes to get an emergency vehicle up there. Now, I'm sure that none of you in this council would want to feel responsible for doing any action that is going to contribute to the health and well-being of any of your citizens. But more than that, there is a legal issue here. I mean, I'm sure there's many lawyers in town that would salivate at the opportunity to bring a case of a plaintiff against the city of Bloomington, which has pretty deep pockets, to collect a large sum of money from a wrongful death that was caused by the delay in the time of getting an emergency vehicle up to us.
Mr. Canfield, you're at your time. Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Canfield. Mr. Canfield, thank you for your comments. Welcome. If you would, please share your name for the record after you sign in, and then you'll have three minutes.
Carol Canfield, lifelong resident. I appreciated Councilmember Bowlin's comments in the beginning. To that, I would like to say, you don't want to leave people behind. Let's include the elderly and the infirmed in that. We need to get through the park for the beauty of the park. For those of us who can't access the shelters and things by walking, and I would include myself in that, if I were not pushing a wheelchair for balance to get things to the town hall meeting on Saturday, it would have been impossible for me to get there. And I want to thank those of you who did come to the town hall meeting. It's greatly appreciated. And I think you heard a lot from the community there. So anyway, let's not leave the elderly and infirm behind. You mentioned the plans, the comprehensive and transportation plans of 2019. They're just that. They're plans. They're not etched in stone. They're not ordinances. They're not laws. Plans can be changed. So let's take the time to deal with this appropriately. Let's not rush through it. And I wanted to let you also know, we did our own traffic survey down in the park, and it was done between March 29th and May 3rd for one-hour intervals that were randomly observed. Different ones went down and recorded and reported back to me. In that time, there were 298 vehicles, 44 bikes on the road, 145 pedestrians on the path, and three pedestrians on the road. Far and away, more vehicles than any other means. That needs to be taken into consideration. It's been said that there are other routes to get out of our neighborhoods on game days. I'd like to know where they are, because since the inception of I-69, those roads have been cut off. We don't have other access. And if you get on one of the roads like Walnut or Kinzer, you're still directed in the direction of the games. I've tried to go across, to go across the other side of the bypass. I've not allowed to do that. We are stuck in our neighborhoods. So please, don't forget us either. We won't make reparations for other people. Well, let's not set up a situation where you're going to end up doing that for us, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Canfield. Welcome.
Hello, council. I'm Mary Morgan with Heading Home of South Central Indiana. We are a community collaborative, including in partnership with the City of Bloomington, to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-repeating. And I am here to briefly address the Polco results related to homelessness. I would absolutely agree that homelessness is a challenge for this community, and as you've heard, for our region and the nation. I think it should remain a priority for our community as long as we have residents who are living in poverty, who are on the edge of homelessness, or who are experiencing homelessness. I look forward to giving you a detailed report later this fall at a council meeting. But I just wanted to assure you that there are many, many individuals and organizations and people within the city of Bloomington itself who are working very hard every day to lift people out of homelessness and to prevent people from becoming homeless in the first place. I appreciate your partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
I got a catch, so I'd like to speak if I may. The city buses are shut.
Could I invite you to come over to the microphone so that cats can pick that up then, please? Do you object to allowing this individual to speak so he can catch a bus? Thank you, Mr. Lucas. And there's a microphone on the side of the podium that'll allow us to capture your comments for cats.
All right. Here's what I say. I've been in this community all my life. My folks lived here. My dad had a.
Could you share your name for the record, please?
Better known as Big Al of those that's been doing IU football. I'm going to tell you something. I'm speaking from the heart. Don't close that road. It was there before you guys. It was there during the special times of first entrance to Bloomington. It has to remain. We've had enough things taken away, and history vanished because we didn't look ahead. My point in this is, when RCA was tore down, that was the first colored TV ever made in the country. And nobody made a big deal about it. Well, the closure of this road is wrong because it's the first entrance to Bloomington. And a lot of people, such as myself, remember that road. And I played in that park when I was 10 years old. And it means something to me. It means something to everyone in this room that loves tradition and history. We can't let things like this go away. Because if you don't remember your roots, you lose a lot of things. And that road is much a route to this community as anything I know. And I beg you, I implore upon you, do not close that road. There's a lot, lot of ways you can do this. If you want access for people, let the buses be free. Get a wheel tax. Let everybody that don't drive a car ride on the bus free. County and city buses work together to make that work. Sometimes change is good, but not this time. Under no way. I love this community. I've grown up in it. I've went to the park. I've had many picnics there. I've rode my wheelchair down there and just sat and thought about what it means to live in this town. And from 10 years old on, I played in that park. If you change it, you change a part of history that doesn't need to be changed. Sometimes you have to keep things as they are to really mean something to someone. And if you change it, a part of us dies. Don't do it. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. And thank you, thank you to the next speaker for being flexible, so.
My name is Crystal Henry. I've never spoken or been to any type of governmental meeting. My spouse and I own a home in Fritz Terrace, one of the two large subdivisions off Kinzer Pike across from the Cascades Golf Course. We do not have sidewalks in these subdivisions. And I say that because part of this is about bikes and safety for the kids at Bloomington North. We have children riding bikes, mothers pushing strollers, kids walking to Bloomington North High School, and others walking to the bus stops that have no other option but to walk in the streets in our subdivisions. The parks near us in the downtown area do not feel safe to use due to the large population of transit homeless and drug users. The new Switchyard Park is mostly void of trees and does not provide much cover from the sun and heat. It is also becoming a magnet for the homeless population. The only oasis in our area in the north is Cascades Park. My spouse and I used to frequent Cascades to walk our dogs. It felt safe to us. We could enjoy sun, shade, and the creek was a blessing for both us and our pets. The area of the park where you could drive across the creek and park your cars was usually filled with families and kids enjoying the water. Their presence enhanced the feeling of safety, and we would usually walk past them further into the park, knowing that the people were near should we need help for any reason. I say this in past tense. When Cascades road was temporarily closed, the population of homeless persons living in and around the park started increasing. When the road reopened with the parking area closed, where the children and families used to play in the creek, the population of homeless increased and the children and families decreased. The last time we walked our pets in this area, there were no families or children. What we found is we walked further into the park where people were sleeping on the concrete picnic tables. We no longer walk our dogs in this area of Cascades Park. We no longer feel safe there. I firmly believe, if you close the road permanently, that end of the park will become a new homeless encampment that the police will not even be able to drive through. drive through on a regular basis to regulate. It's already happening. This would not be an area I would want my children passing through. I do not understand why those in power do not listen to the wants and needs of those that live here year-round. Millions of our tax dollars have been spent supporting the wants and needs of the students and people on bikes. What about us? How many students or parents have petitioned for a bike route to Bloomington North High School? I do not expect you to put sidewalks in my subdivision, but is it too much to ask for just one park? Please, do not close the road. Listen to the citizens of Bloomington and those most affected by your decision. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome. After you sign in, if you would share your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Bonnie Maxwell, and I live up in Fritz Terrace. And per our first speaker, I will reiterate that there is very few roads for us to go home. And on game days, well, first of all, we could have gone up around A Cuff, but that's been cut off by '69. On game days, the police now stop you. You can't go on the bypass and make a left-hand turn onto Kinzer. You can't go down to Walnut and make a left-hand turn. You can't go down to Dunn and make a left-hand turn. There is no way for us to get home when they're blocking traffic for football, basketball games, or graduation. Most of us know we can go underneath the bypass, down Cascades Row, and through the golf course, and most of us do that. It's the only road you have going north from the city when they're blocking us all off. You have to allow, you block off that Cascades, we have no way to get home easily without going maybe up the interstate to Oliver Winery, or come back down, whatever. That's ridiculous. You have to allow us more than one road north. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell.
Peter Dorfman, near West Side. I was going to speak against the closing of the road, but I'm not going to try to outdo Al Carpenter. I will say that this proposal strikes me as yet another one of those ageist and ableist proposals that has come from this administration and frankly, from the city council, privileging the rights of the 5% or so of Bloomingtonians who use bicycles as a regular mode of transportation over that, the rights of the disabled, the elderly, the people who live north of the park, and essentially, everybody else. I would urge you not to go forward with this proposal. Just leave the park the way it is. Amend the transportation plan, which is full of garbage and has been since the day it was crafted. I have two more minutes, so I just wanted to make a comment on the earlier presentation on the survey. Monroe County and Bloomington are officially designated a medically underserved area. It means there are fewer doctors by a lot than we need. I have changed primary care physicians twice since in the eight years I've lived here. I literally don't know anyone who hasn't changed primary care doctors lately. We have a primary care crisis here, and I am mystified as to why the earlier survey contained no quality-of-life comment whatsoever that touched on health care. It is one of our most important quality-of-life issues. All I can imagine is that the question was just never asked in the survey. I would urge in future surveys, if we're going to be tracking the quality of life here, that we start asking about health care because it's critical. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorfman.
We are at time. Actually, we're a little past time on the public comment period. Would we like to extend this by 10 minutes, perhaps?
It's moved that we extend the time by 15 minutes.
It's been moved and seconded. Deputy Clerk McDowell, will you please call the role on the motion to extend?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambleary?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
And Sims.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The time is extended. Welcome. If you would share your name, please, and then you'll have three minutes.
Alex Carpera. And greetings, members. Thanks for an opportunity to speak. I don't think this will be long. Just about everybody that's been up here has said many of the things I wanted to cover. But I've got some questions. Are there federal regulations and guidances that govern what we're talking about today? Are there state rules or regulations or guidances that we're talking about today? I don't think so. This is a local issue, and we can manage it. It occurs to me that one of the speakers talked about ADA, and I guess there are other organizations that have input on this, but we can govern it because this is our project. We can deal with it. If there are problems, we'll figure them out. It occurs to me that our family moved here in 1972. Lower Cascades is just a very fond place to be. Our children went there. We took them down there, and we saw the improvements in the play area. And now, guess what? When our children are in town, they take their children, our grandchildren, down to the park to play. We've had picnics there. And it occurs to me that one of the important things that has been mentioned is, or maybe not really given as much attention as it should have, are those families who want to have a picnic and are not able to carry all the goods for a picnic some distance. So how can they park one place and walk a half a mile to where they want to be, carrying all this, everything they want for the picnic? I think it presents a problem. We can figure that out. We were over there just recently and saw, well, areas that we hadn't been on in a while, brand-new walkways, or at least to us, they were brand-new. And that tells me that modifications have taken place to allow people access, and that's the key thing, access to dearly beloved Cascade Park. And I think I would conclude with that. Let's not mess with it. Let's do what we can to preserve it and make it useful to everybody. Everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
Welcome. When you're ready, if you would please share your name for the record, then you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Susan Graves. I've lived in Bloomington basically all my life, and I'm here to beg you to do well with that park. I attended the public town hall meeting this past week, which was very enlightening. There were a lot of people. That building was full with people from around the area who liked to come to the park or live next to it. So I beg you to, all of us work together to come up with something that fits for everyone. I found it really, I just wanted to hear what other people, what their reasonings were and such whenever I went. Mr. Carpenter spoke that day, and I found that I had several of the same feelings that he had that he mentioned. I just think that we all need to work together on this, and I don't think that we're anywhere near. One thought that I had overnight last night, it's been heavy on my mind, so in the middle of the night I woke up, and it's like, oh, my gosh, I hope they seriously consider this, is as far as, as far as closing that off, if you imagine that, there seemed to be some serious discussion as though we think we may be closing this off at the end. If that's allowed to occur, and we already are envisioning or believing that what is, say, at another park in downtown may suddenly be at this one as well at the end of it, where we're no longer going through it, I really think it's a huge mistake for this city to close down that roadway. The reason for it is, is that that would then provide the opportunity, there's been three cars that are sometimes useful, sometimes not useful, and people living in them right there at the base of that bridge. I've made more laps over there here recently. It's just got to be something that's workable. If, at any point in time, we decide, well, we're going to close that completely, first off, if somebody's hurt, how are we going to get to them? And then people will quit coming that really have loved it their entire life. I mean, we just really have to work together to come up with something that fits. And I don't think there's been that involvement with the, I haven't heard of any community involvement. I just heard about that meeting and just went over there to see what was going on, to see if I could hear what happens. But to project right now as though it may become like the Second Street location, that's very alarming to me, that that would close it down with all the people, with all the children being able to even go there. And the thing that I found with Mr. Carpenter that-
Ms. Graves, that concludes your time.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone else on Zoom?
Deidre Todd?
Okay. While the next person is signing in, let's go to Zoom. Ms. Todd, welcome. Please confirm your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
My name's Deidre Todd. I live in Northwood Estates. I can't understand why this is happening, because with all the work that has been done in the park, that stretch of road is probably the safest for pedestrians and bicyclists and drivers that it's ever been. At the public meeting, I happened to be sitting where I could watch the road. During that time, there was one car that I thought was speeding. There were two pedestrians on the east side of the road, which were doing everything properly, and they seemed to have no problems. I just couldn't understand why they didn't cross over and walk on the nice new path. And then there were six bicyclists. Four of those bicyclists were following all the rules. They had no problems with the cars passing them. And then the other two bicyclists, one of which was the person who did all the complaining, were riding down the middle of the road. So no wonder they had cars tailgating. So there are jerks in every facet of life. Some are driving, some are walking, some are being bicyclists. I just don't understand why we're closing the road when it's already safer than any other approach on either side of the road. I just, I don't understand. You know, you did the work. It seems to be working, so why are we trying to fix it? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Todd. And Mr. Lucas, that was our last on Zoom, right, so far?
I see one additional hand raised, and I've got one short comment on chat.
Okay, let's come here in chambers, and then we'll alternate. So, welcome. If you would, please share your name for the record after you sign in, and then you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Joe Mama Bear Davis, and thank you for listening to all of us who wish to place input on this most important Bloomington issue. So I'm just a regular working-class guy, fiscally conservative, and I want to save money wherever it's possible. But I have to say, my number-one preference would be to spend the $3 million. I mean, then everybody gets what they want. Everybody gets what they want. In the meantime, how about we keep the road open and add a sidewalk? If we have to go in and change the, you know, amend the transportation plan, then let's do it. But $3 million is a drop in the bucket to the liability that the city is going to assume if that road is closed. Now, it wasn't all that long ago that it was before the city council to allow permanent camping in our public parks. So fortunately, that didn't pass. But as a default, unintended or not, we did have a taking of our public parks. I live one block from Seminary. No one goes to Seminary except the unhoused. I know this because I've been trying to collect signatures to get on the ballot for office, okay? I have spoken with many unhoused people who have signed my petition, and they tell me about how concerned they are about the raising population of Bloomington that are unhoused and who are unstable, making it unsafe for them. They mostly keep to themselves, because there's just too much crazy mischief happening all the time. I mean, did everyone read the headline this morning about the machetes? I'm concerned about this. Now, we had, there was a forum this past Saturday, and people expressed, including former councilmember Sterbaum, how threatened he felt when he would visit the park with his grandson. And I know that he's a tough guy, you know? No one is pushing around Chris Sterbaum, you know? But this is the reality, okay? Not only, not only has Seminary Square Park been taken away, but People's Park is largely been taken away, except for Thursdays, when there's a concert there.
Mr. Davis, you're at your time. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Please go ahead.
Sorry, my name's Greg Alexander. I prepared a speech about transportation planning. You can probably imagine it. But I want to share something a little more personal. In April of 2020, like everyone else, I was going crazy from isolation. I went for bike rides almost every evening, and I loved going through Cascades Park at the beginning or the end of those trips. During the pilot project, I could always count on seeing friendly faces there, which I think you can remember, that was really rare to see people's faces. One warm April evening, I was biking on West Maple Grove Road, west of the sewage treatment plant up there, and I smelled a flower. It was growing in one of the wild areas between two farmers' fields. I don't know anything about flowers. I can't tell you what kind it was, but I recognized it. I recognized the smell. It was very distinctive. It reminded me of my childhood. I grew up here. And I thought about that for a while. That was right before I turned 40, and I was beginning to notice. I didn't really enjoy smelling the flower. I enjoyed the memory. It reminded me of my childhood. Once you notice that sort of thing, it's everywhere. I often don't enjoy things as they are today. I enjoy remembering my childhood. And that's in a nutshell why I support opening Cascades to children. The opposition and I agree on one thing. Nothing is as important as your childhood. These are the memories that feed you for your entire life, even as the world changes around you. My child learned how to ride his bike there during the pilot in April of 2020. We played in parts of the park we had never played in before or since. Kids still play in the rapids where cars used to roll through. This park is a better experience for kids when there aren't cars. They are more carefree. They travel further at a younger age, which is a huge, huge epidemic for our age group, not so much for theirs. When they were younger, kids traveled. They require less supervision. The pilot was fantastic for my children. It was, it opened the park to them. The park was more beautiful, more peaceful, more natural. All you heard were birds, cicadas, and the creek. And sometimes you would hear a bike whiz by, very quiet noise compared to a car or a cement truck. And sometimes you would hear laughter. I grew up in Ellisville. I missed out on a lot of opportunities because of the lousy transportation options around those schools. I want to give something better to my children. They need this route and the connections that come next. If not now, when? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
Welcome. After you sign in, if you would share your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
I'm Charles Haken, living in Bloomington.
I'm Charles Aiken, lived in Bloomington. It'll be 50 years this, this month that we moved here. Again, there's been very good reasons given for, for, for not closing the road. The young people, the old people, the infirm people, that's, that's been addressed here. What hasn't been addressed is this seems to be a, a, a part of a general pattern the last couple of years in Bloomington, to mess with traffic, putting all these, to, to restrict lanes. The prime example is Seventh Street. I used to work in the poplars with an office that overlooked Seventh Street. I would hate to be able to sit there now and look at what's going on, on that road. We lived for a while south of town. Winslow was one of our private, one of our primary roads. That's been messed up pretty well. There's, they put islands in there. I assume they're in conjunction with crosswalks so that people, I guess, can walk halfway across the street, wait for traffic, and then go the rest of the way. But driving, you're swerving around these things. I don't drive on Winslow that much anymore, but I still do drive on Winslow. I have never seen anybody crossing the road, making use of these islands and things. They should be able to look both ways. Another example, using Winslow, is heading east on Winslow. You want to make a right-hand turn on Allendale. There used to be a right-turn lane there. You'd pull over, stop, make your turn, and then the traffic going through could be going through. Now they've completely closed off the right lane. All traffic has to stop in a single line, wait their turn to go. They say that these traffic circles are meant to improve the flow of traffic. I think closing off a right-turn lane does not improve the flow of traffic. So anyway, my contention that do not close it, the, the road. We'll have a new administration in a, a matter of months. Let them take care of it. I think the current one has done enough damage to, to traffic, and that, and that we should wait for the next one to come along and see what they want to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas?
So on Zoom, we have Jeremy.
Welcome, if you would, confirm your full name for the record, please, and then you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Herhaski Schneider. Yeah, thank you for hearing from me. I'll make this short. I grew up in a lower-middle-class family in Bloomington, and I graduated high school from Bloomington North in 2017. And I wish this road was closed. I would, that would have been great, as someone who did walk around and couldn't have a car at all times. And, you know, like, this, this would have been a great opportunity, and I really do hope you consider closing it down. No municipality that has ever closed down a road in the United States, I believe, has regretted it when you do an opportunity, when you do have an opportunity like this, I think you really should take it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we had a comment in chat as well? Am I remembering that right?
Yes, Steve asked me to read the following announcement as his comment, which reads, "There's an upcoming heat wave, and there are cooling stations opening. Monroe County will be under a heat advisory from 8:00 a.m. on Thursday, July 27th through 11:59 p.m. on Friday, July 28th. Extreme heat will be a hazard for tomorrow and Friday as temperatures will rise to the mid-90s with a heat index around 105. The Monroe County Emergency Management Agency will be activating nine cooling stations around the county for Thursday, July 27th and Friday, July 28th. Cooling stations will be open from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. both days. The cooling stations serve the purpose of being a cool facility where individuals who don't have a way of staying cool can come in for a short period of time to cool down and continue on their way. Two fire stations are opening their doors to both humans and pets during the hours of the cooling station. Stations 21 and 29 of the Monroe Fire Protection District are allowing pets. However, pets must be kept in a kennel or carrier. Please respect and follow all the rules of the stations at all times." And that is the end of the comment.
Thank you for that comment, Mr. Dove, and for passing along that information. Mr. Lucas, is there anyone else?
No.
Okay, and that'll conclude. We are just right at time. Perfect. That concludes our first of two periods of public comment, and I thank you all for your comments. We will now move into appointments to boards and commissions. Does Interview Team A have any appointments to make? Interview Team B? Or inter, oh, Interview Team B, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. I would like to move on behalf of Interview Committee B that we appoint Megan Bankowski to seat C2 of the Traffic Commission.
It's been moved and seconded. Deputy Clerk McDowell, will you please call the roll?
Valery?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And that passes, and we thank Ms. Bankowski for her service.
Are there any other appointments from Interview, or recommendations from Interview Team B? Or Interview Team C? Okay? I will take this opportunity to share, as many folks know, our colleagues, the Monroe County Commissioners, on July 5th established a capital improvement board that will be working with the project going forward of the expansion of the convention center. There are multiple bodies that have been asked to make appointments to that seven-member board. City Council is one of them. We will be making one appointment. Because it's a little bit of a different appointment, and we have multiple appointments coming in from different agencies, I wanted to pull together a special, I'm pulling together a special committee, and I've drawn one member from each of the three interview teams. So I want to, Councilmember Sandberg and Councilmember Smith are going to join me. We will be seeking and reviewing applications for appointment to the capital improvement board, and I anticipate that we will come back to council with a recommendation by our September 6th meeting. September 6th? September 6th. So, I share that, and I thank Councilmembers Sandberg and Smith for their service in that regard. That takes us to legislation.
I believe there are two appointments for the Human Rights Commission as well, reappointments. Is that accurate?
I'm not aware of that. What Interview Team-
My understanding is that with the Human Rights Commission being now a joint commission with the county, that the council appointments needed to be reappointed due to that merger.
Okay. Do we have that motion in hand that can be shared, or shall we take that up next week?
Um, I believe maybe Council Attorney Lucas can add some info.
Deputy Clerk Crossley shared that information with Councilmembers Sims, Smith, and Rosenbarger earlier today. If they're not prepared to offer a motion tonight, I would suggest taking that up next week, or I can provide what information I have on the topic if folks would like to address it tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Volin?
Just pulled up the listing of the current Human Rights Commission. Our appointees in seats C1 and C2 are Emma Williams and Byron Bangert. I assume these are the two names that we want to reappoint to the newly-created commission. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I'm happy to make the motion, but if a member of the committee would like to do it, they can do it instead, Mr. Smith or Mr. Sims.
This is Team A, and says something we can do next week. We just got this information. I'm sorry, we just got this information. So is there any harm in us doing this next week?
I don't know.
I mean, I know you all think it's just a formality, and it probably is, but I'd really rather my team to do, deal with this. Team A.
That's fine.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Volin?
I'd just point out that Mr. Bangert's seat expires in January of '24, so it's still active. Ms. Williams' seat expires January of '25, so they're actively serving now. And I don't know if we want to take the opportunity to switch horses in the middle of the stream, but I just wanted to point that out.
We're aware of that, and we just weren't prepared to do it tonight, is all I'm saying.
Okay. So you'll come back to us next week with a recommendation?
Well, our team will be.
Or your team will be.
Yes, I would assume so, now that Jennifer just let us know. I'm sorry, Clerk Crossley, let us know. So, yes, we plan to do that.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
Is there any other business under appointments to boards and commissions? Seeing none, let's move into legislation for second readings and resolutions.
Madam President, I move that Resolution 2313 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the Deputy Clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Scambulery?
Yes. It's been moved and seconded. Will the Deputy Clerk please read?
Resolution 23-13, Resolution on the Hazards of Artificial Intelligence. The synopsis is, this resolution is sponsored by Councilmember Rallo. It calls for officials at all levels of government to consider and acquaint themselves with the existential risks posed by artificial intelligence, and calls for the imposition of a moratorium on artificial intel, artificial general intelligence development until there is a guarantee that the technology aligns with human values and well-being.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move that Resolution 2313 be adopted.
Thank you, and you will be presenting for us.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity, and I would first like to thank Stephen Lucas and Abby Nupstein for their assistance, their help on crafting this resolution. This follows a statement that I made, council statement that I made on June 21st, where I expressed my concerns about this technology. And what I would like this resolution to do is raise awareness and draw attention of our elected representatives to the threat. And I'm motivated by the, by the need to ensure the safety of the public, humanity, actually, because the risks are profound. What caught my attention was an effort by industry leaders. This was back in early spring. It was covered by the New York Times, and in a May 30th article, it states that "Artificial intelligence poses risk of extinction. Industry leaders warn." And these are leaders from OpenAI, Google DeepMind, Anthropic, and other AI labs who are developing this kind of artificial general intelligence. They're the ones who are leading a petition that is now signed by over 1,100 industry, tech, and notables within the field, asking essentially for a moratorium or a pause of, in this case, six months. This, the resolution doesn't specify the duration of time. Some have said that it needs to be longer. In any case, what's needed is a pause until the alignment problem can be solved. And as Ms. McDowell said, the alignment refers to the alignment of human values with human values and human well-being. So broadly speaking, there are two categories of AI, and this does not pertain to the functional, specific, narrow AI that is being developed for purposes of specific tasks in mind. So for instance, there's AI that plays chess. There's AI that image, that does imaging interpretation. There's AI that does stock trading, and so forth. So those are specific categories, specific tasks that the AI engages in. And the other category is artificial general intelligence, and this aims to model human intelligence with an explicit or implicit goal of achieving essentially self-awareness and perhaps sentience and agency. This is deemed by the experts within the field, many of them, to be dangerous. Now, they are in a situation where they're compelled to, because of a fiduciary responsibility of their respective corporations that they're working for, to proceed with this type of research before their competitors do. So they are in a race, essentially, and there's much money to be made. There's, there is bound to be pushback because there's a lot of investment dollars pouring in, a lot of venture capital, to see that, that this comes about, who's going to be the first to develop it. But this is dangerous because we've never really had to deal with a, an intelligence that is capable, has greater capability than human beings. In fact, potentially orders of magnitude greater intelligence, maybe 1,000 times greater intelligence, maybe a million times greater intelligence. So this is why these industry leaders are looking to place a pause on this technology. So, much good can come from narrow AI, there's no question. There is a downside to narrow AI. A lot of it is dual-purpose. I mean, think of designing cancer cures. That would be a wonderful thing for humanity. However, the same technology might be able to, working with synthetic biology, to work on bioweapons. That is a threat enough, but this resolution really addresses the threat of artificial general intelligence. So I leave the narrow aspect alone. You know, that can continue. Now, there is, excuse me. So let me go through the, the resolution, because I don't want to spend an excessive amount of time. So I'm going to, I'm going to try for brevity to cut out some, some of this. So proceeding to the language of the ordinance, the first clause introduces the fact that the computational capacity of AI is increasing exponentially. It's, it's increasing in a hockey-stick fashion, not in linear fashion. So between the years 2012 and 2019, there's been a 300,000-fold increase in capacity of compute. So now the doubling time is every 3.4 months. That's why, that's why I think there's an urgency there that's expressed by a number of people within the, the industry. The second whereas clause talks about the displacement of jobs. That's going to be inevitable. And I, you know, we could argue there will be jobs created, but there is going to be displacement. But it shows that it will have a profound effect on the labor market. That's something to be aware of. AI technologies, including the large language models which use this parallel processing of transformers to create a neural net, network, are recognized to pose threats for misuse as well. I mean, that's been recognized by the federal government, it's been recognized by industry The fourth whereas clause speaks to, in a competitive market, the private technology companies are endeavoring to create the most advanced versions of AI. That's happening as we speak. ChatGPT-4, for instance, is the latest large language model, and people are becoming now aware of it and, and the profound effects that it's having on society. Clause five is the aim of many companies to create artificial general intelligence, AGI, is this, is an AI capable of the human attributes of deduction, reasoning, self-awareness, human-like cognitive abilities that would far exceed the general intelligence of human beings by orders of magnitude. Researchers from Cornell University, this is clause number six, contend that ChatGPT-4, a language processing tool driven by AI tech, AI technology, is an early form of this AGI, so we can kind of glimpse what it's going to be, what, what it's going to be capable of. That can perform novel and difficult tasks close to human-level performance, a lot of surprises, I might add, by those who actually created it, without really any idea of how it came about, coming up with its answers. The next clause, clause number seven, is, refers to, "The pace of AI development is outpacing the ability to guarantee that alignment, that meant to ensure AI systems achieve desired outcomes with human values and well, well-being." So the capability is- So the capability is heading exponentially. The alignment is heading at a, in a sort of a linear fashion. It's a very difficult question. How do you program in human values? Because values differ among human beings. And values are relative to some degree because, depending upon context, depending upon situation. So that's, that's one problem with it. Another problem is simply resources. These companies have spent very little comparatively with the capability aspect of AI, general intelligence. And so that needs to reverse. Many more resources have to be applied. The, the next whereas clause, experts in alignment research have warned that creating super intelligent AI before solving the alignment problem could lead to catastrophic outcomes. So imagine controlling a being that has far superior intelligence to you. I mean, not just sort of compared to us and chimpanzees, which might be an order of magnitude, I don't know. But think of something a thousand times smarter. How are you going to keep that in a box? And that's, that's the, why many experts are alarmed. The next whereas clause speaks to the letter that I referred to, the, the statement. On March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, the Future of Life Institute published an open letter calling for all AI labs to observe a six-month moratorium on certain AI development, which subsequently has been signed by over a thousand notable technology industry leaders and many more thousands of individuals. Now, there's a debate going on about the length of time of the moratorium or pause. And so I included an expert in the alignment question, Eliezer Yudkowsky, who worked with a group called the the Machine Intelligence Research Institute. He spent a couple of decades working on the alignment problem. And he's had, admittedly, they've had difficulties achieving that. And what he says is that that moratorium needs to be implemented to prevent humanity's extinction. So this is, you know, sort of an Oppenheimer moment in a sense. This is where we've got a technology that is on the level of synthetic biology's ability to create pandemics or the, or nuclear weapons. And it's an urgent, it's an urgent problem. The last whereas clause refers to Jeffrey Hinton and the New York Times article. There were, there were several founders essentially of AI, and Jeffrey Hinton is considered the godfather of AI. And he's a former vice president of engineering at Google. And he quit that job right after that letter was signed and decided to apply himself to the safety question. And what he has warned is that humanity will not be able to limit AI's potential. He believes the technology is an imminent existential threat. So that's, that's the guy who started the whole thing going back in the nineteen-seventies, I believe. So, the section's where it's resolved. We resolve that elected officials at all levels of government are urged to fully understand AI, AI technology and its potential hazards. That seems self-evident. They need to understand it in order to regulate it because the industry can't regulate itself. It takes government to do that. Section two, federal representatives are urged to determine the extent of the existential threats posed by artificial general intelligence, that is, the one that's modeling human, the human mind, with the idea of achieving superintelligence. And to consider whether a super intelligent AGI could be controlled by much less intelligent beings such as humans. Section three, federal representatives are urged to impose a moratorium restricting AGI development until AGI alignment with human values and well-being is guaranteed. So it calls for that, those guardrails. Because once it's, the problem is, once AI is super intelligent, there's no controlling it potentially. So it has to be done before or concurrently. Section four, federal representatives are urged to work on international agreements that would ensure the provisions of any such regulations are shared and adhered to globally. Those who are warning about this are saying we need an international agreement because these, these giant GPUs, these processors that were AI as being experimented on are global, and we need an international agreement because anybody could create it if that is not adhered to. And the last clause is simply that the city clerk is directed to send a copy of this resolution duly adopted to both houses of the Indiana General Assembly, to the governor of Indiana, to the Indiana Congressional delegation, and to the President of the United States. Because I think it's incumbent on all of our representatives to be aware of this problem and to take some action for public safety. That's the resolution, and I appreciate any questions that you might have. Thanks.
Questions from council members. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo. One of the whereas is, and I guess I'm interested in, in this alignment with human values and well-being. And I guess I'm asking for that, and it is a concern or a fear, I guess, of AI. But I know that we, from a human value standpoint, that we've already been pretty damn cruel to each other and mistreated people. So I guess now we're worried about AI and maybe the majority or the necessary amount of people, not so much in the past. So I, I guess what's, how's the difference? And, and everything, I, I'm just have questions. I don't disagree in principle with, with this resolution. But can you talk about that?
Well, that's a very good question. It's probably beyond what I can answer, but I would agree with you. We're still evolving socially to be able to make sure that we have a, a fair, equitable society for everyone. There is clear, there, that, that, we're not even to that point, right? So in order to establish a machine or a, or, you know, a being that has our welfare in mind, everyone's welfare in mind, is going to be complicated. It's going to be very difficult. So here's, here's one, here's one example where it's complicated. So we value truth-telling. We should say, you know, just on the face of it, everyone should tell the truth. But do you tell the truth in every circumstance? If the Nazis come to your door and say, where are the Jews? Do you tell them where they are? You don't. You don't tell the truth in that case. So it's very complicated how this. So the moral thing to do is not to do that, obviously. So it's, it becomes very complicated on the, in, in the realm of context. Then there's just the fact that a general artificial intelligence could have an objective where it may be just indifferent to people and our, and our welfare. In other words, it may not be malevolent, malevolent in any sense. It may not even intentionally want to do away with us. But we just sort of get in the way of whatever its objective is. So there's so much to consider in this, and I, I take that question very, I think it's a superb question because it just reveals how difficult this problem is.
Okay, thank you. I would, I would agree with that. Also. May I?
I was gonna ask if you had a follow-up question. You do, please go ahead.
Thank you. I, I think you also said AI can't regulate itself, that government has to do that.
The industry can't. The industry is actually, they, they testified to the Congress and said, we can't do it. We're not in any position. I remember watching the OpenAI CO. Well, it takes government to regulate the industry. The industry can't self-regulate. And the government will be required to have that, those agreements that would be international in nature. So the industry are racing toward this, and they're saying, we can't stop because if we don't make the next advancement, Google will, right? Or some other company will. And so it takes, so this is why they made a plea. Put a pause. Have a moratorium, have a pause until we can get ahead of this. It seems prudent to me, so.
Lastly, if I may. When you get to the back of this, elected officials are, of all levels, are urged to fully understand AI technology and its potential hazards. How do you suggest, and particularly since it's evolving so quickly? And so how do we ever get ahead of that? And me personally, how do I, am I able to understand that? And I will tell you, I'm still having a hard time trying to understand how we've treated our fellow human beings over the history of this country. So how can I understand this? Taken into account, I don't disagree with everything that you've listed here. But some, some, some of the way we build up to it, I think, just needs to be discussed, so. What, what do you suggest that we, that we learn to get ahead of this or to learn about this?
Well, I don't, I, I think, I'm surprised at what I found in the last six months. I had no idea that the rate of capability was doubling every three-point-four months. And, you know, my background is in science, and so I understand the exponential function. And when things exponential, it's very, it's very different than, you can't, you don't look at the past and project into the future in a linear way. It's completely off-scale. It can double, you know, the doubling time, three-point-four months is astounding. So that would be one thing for them to understand is that this technology is proceeding so quickly that the regulation, the discussion on regulation needs to happen right away. So they need to get the best people in the room, the best experts, to say, okay, how do we go about ensuring that this is safe? And what is, what is required? In, in the meantime, just make a pause until, until the human beings can catch up, until elected officials can catch up. Because I'm not an IT person, I don't know the ins and outs of AI, but what I've learned alarms me. And I do think it's a, it's a threat. I wouldn't have moved this forward if I hadn't thought that. And threat to everyone, for that matter. So, so yes, they need to understand it just as a first step in order to do anything. They need to understand what's happening, so. Yeah.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Volin?
Yes, thanks for the presentation, Councilmember Rallo. How many other similar pieces of legislation to this have been considered and/or passed in localities around the country?
I don't know of any.
I mean, do you know anybody who's working on it?
I know that there have been calls by industry leaders for anyone, everyone, to participate in this conversation and to appeal to their elected representatives who they're urging to regulate. So.
Thank you, yeah.
I haven't done an exhaustive research. Mr. Lucas, have you, are you familiar with any other, like?
I mean, I was just wondering, like, were they phrasing it in a similar way? Or were they focusing on other, on some aspect of AI, like automated decisions? Or, you know, I mean, like, artificial intelligence involved in the trading of stocks or in making decision, you know, like, is that, is there anything specific out there that anybody is talking about? Are they just talking about the general principles that you have put forward?
As I said, this is sort of, there's a lot of technology, this technology is dual-use in many ways. It can, it can, it can result in fabulous benefits of solving problems. We have a very difficult time conceiving of how we address climate change, for instance. This could be applied to that and have tremendous benefits. But, you know, there is the other, a potential dark side, like any other technology, I suppose, like many technologies. The one that I chose to address was the artificial general intelligence, which is the, the biggest problem I see, the most alarming thing. Because this is what the industry leaders are pointing to in terms of a potential terminal event for us. That is, we're creating something that's going to succeed us. And so I thought I'd start there. Otherwise, at lower levels, it just gets too complicated, and it's gonna have to fall to our representatives to regulate it in some way, I'm sure. Because all those things are very dangerous. I mean, imagine terrorists getting a hold of, of, you know, this technology and using it to design various things. So I left it at that. I, I made it rather simple to address the human modeling aspect, so.
Thank you.
Additional questions? If not, I'll take a turn? Yes, thank you for the presentation. I understand the global nature of this issue, and, and at the same time, I also like to localize our discussion of it, too. And so I'm wondering, we have research on AGI and GI, general intelligence going on at the university with various companies in town. Were any of them consulted in developing this? Or is, are there any conversations that have been had yet in that regard?
I, I haven't discussed it with any local technology leaders, but, you know, the idea of, of a pause would affect everyone. So nobody would be at a competitive disadvantage.
Okay.
I mean, it applies, it would apply to everybody. It doesn't favor any particular industry or any particular actors.
And what about scholars and researchers in a university setting who are not spitting off companies or?
Yeah, you'll see, refer to, well, besides the Cornell researchers, some of the signatories are from various universities in technology fields, MIT and, and other.
And locally, I, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, have we talked to anyone at LUDY? Have we talked to anyone at the committees or any of the companies locally who are involved in this kind of work?
No, I have, I haven't. But, yeah.
And I wonder if that's an opportunity as we have this conversation and think about this, so.
Well, I think going forward, I think the threat is urgent. I think that it's, if you look at the signatories, they're very broad-based in industry, in academe. There's been people in Congress talking about it. And so this is an attempt at a local level to essentially try to activate the attention to something that's an immense danger to everybody and an immediate danger to everybody. I mean, I, I frankly don't know why a pause in order to ensure human well-being and safety would be objected to by anyone.
Okay. Second question is actually related to that very point. The language that caught my attention was in the now therefore be resolved section three. Restricting AGI development until AGI alignment with human values and well-being is guaranteed. How do we do that? I, I'm unclear as to how we guarantee alignment with human values and well-being. Because in the absence of our ability to do that, it sounds like we're calling for a moratorium forever.
Well, we need assurances that it will not harm humanity. That's what, that's what the nature of that resolved is. There shouldn't, there shouldn't be doubt as to whether it could inflict catastrophic harm on, on, on people.
And, and are you confident we could get to a point where there is no doubt?
I, I'm not in the industry, but there's a spectrum of people who believe that they can do it. So OpenAI just dedicated, I can't remember, thirty percent of their, of their capital resources to developing the alignment. And they think they can do it. They think they can do it in a short term. There are others, as I've said, who say can't do it. So there's a, there's a, there's a range of spectrum. I just, I feel that it's, it's necessary to ensure the safety of humanity as we unleash this novel and profoundly dangerous technology.
Thank you. Those are my questions. Are there other round one quest, or questions period? Okay? If not, then let's go to the public for comment on resolution twenty-three thirteen. Mr. Lucas, could you extend our invitation on Zoom, please? And could anyone interested in offering comment, please approach the podium?
If there are members of the public joining us on Zoom and would like to speak to this item, please let us know by using the raise hand feature, which you can find under your control bar by clicking the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Okay. Thank you. Let's begin here in chambers. Welcome. If you would share your name. Welcome, if you would share your name for the record, and then you will have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jen Pearl, and I'm the president at the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. We're a nonprofit that serves all of Monroe County in creating quality employment and economic vibrancy. And that means opportunity for our neighbors. Economic development at its heart is about people first. And we should always be asking these questions that you're asking about how advancements impact our communities and impact our neighbors. We very much share, I think, those values that are being discussed here today. And we also want to thank council members for caring so deeply about our community that we ask these questions as a community as well. Our community is also very uniquely positioned for a conversation like this. We're a hub on the innovation corridor that runs from Indianapolis to NSWC Crane. Indiana University has leaders in AI, machine learning, and digital ethics as well. And we have over 50 companies that are based here working in tech. The U.S. Chips and Science Act is bringing opportunities to our region when it comes to investments in technology. So what is our role as a community here? And what message do we wish to send as a community together? As we've seen from our history, it's difficult to stop technological advancements. Rather than simply calling for a moratorium, we instead have a chance to lead as a community. With all of the expertise that is here, our community has agency in a way that many other communities do not. We have experts that are already asking these hard questions, questions that absolutely should be asked. We, as a community, can shape the conversation from a place of expertise, not at all glossing over the important questions that Councilmember Rallo, Sims, and others have raised here. We should be engaging in these questions. And this is an opportunity that we should take to lead in this conversation as a community. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes, one speaker at the moment.
Okay, let's go here in chambers first, and then we'll go to Zoom. So welcome, if you would.
Peter Dorfman from near West Side. Let me start by saying, for most of the 1990s, I was director of marketing for a small software company that dealt in AI. So I have a little bit of perspective on this. And for my subsequent years as a freelance writer, it's been primarily what I've been asked to write about. AI learns from experience. The predominant forms of AI are trained on very large sets of data. I mean, unimaginably large sets of data these days. They're trained to find patterns in the data that are too noisy, too chaotic for humans generally to be able to capture. Machines can do it almost effortlessly. But they are trained to work toward a goal. And the AI is useless without a goal. And the goal is generally set by its developer. It's a, it's a human-oriented goal. I understand the concern that's being expressed. I, I don't find it that credible that a machine will be able to evolve its own goals separate from those that it was originally assigned. And so for that reason, I would suggest that we're not dealing so much with an inscrutable intelligence that would be, you know, far beyond ours, but that we're dealing with an increasingly powerful tool that in the wrong hands can be incredibly destructive as well. So I, I think that's a good perspective to have on the problem. I, I find the resolution advisory or in, in some respects symbolic. I've seen these kinds of resolutions in council before. I, I always wonder where we're going with this, what, what the ultimate goal of the resolution is. There are more practical objectives that we could focus on as a city if we were interested in looking at some of the more specific applications of AI. Algorithms that satisfy the definition of AI are being used to hire people, to fire people, to decide on people's credit future. And it's already well documented that, that when you train these algorithms on data from past experience, biases can be an important part of the data. So you train an algorithm to decide who gets a loan and who doesn't. If the history that you're training it on contains a pattern of discrimination against certain members of society, the machine will learn to do the same thing. I would suggest that maybe in a future resolution, the city might resolve never to adopt those sorts of algorithms for its own hiring or financial decision-making. That would be a worthwhile goal. Thank you.
Let's go to Zoom while our next person is getting ready.
Yes, we have Luke Judd.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that name?
Luke Judd.
Okay. Mr. Judd, welcome, if you would confirm your name for the record, please, and then you'll have three minutes.
Hi, this is Luke Judd. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, I probably should have used ChatGPT to form these thoughts. It's just kind of scribbles on paper right now. But first, my question is really, what do you think your job is here? Like, I don't understand these symbolic resolutions. It seems to be a waste of time. There are actual problems in this town to deal with. It feels like every time Mr. Rallo was pressed to explain, he kind of leaned on fear mongering and seems to be sort of cherry picking extreme perspectives in order to push this forward, which is not that surprising since he is a self-admitted 9/11 truther. And conspiracy theory thinking is kind of what leads you to this sort of thing. You cherry pick, you find what you want to see in it, and, and you, you live in confirmation bias. To Jim Simms' point, I think that he's also been very silent on trans or gay rights, stuff that's coming down from the state house, which actually, as a city council, you could actually have an effect on, maybe, or at least be heard, rather than these federal suggestions that seem to be kind of a waste of time. Like, why don't we, right now, like, why don't we work on something to, about regulating machetes being carried in public? That's an actual threat in our community, rather than a speculative future threat. And also, this, this asks government officials to understand something that clearly you still don't understand after your professed six months of research. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Let's come here in chambers.
Additional questions?
You'll have your own three minutes, if you would just share your name for the record. You'll have three minutes yourself.
Right. I spoke earlier, but I didn't know I would be speaking on, on this. But it occurred to me that, I don't know much about AI, but what I have learned about it is that I agree with Mr. Rallo that it's something that needs to be taken a look at. And I agree that it needs to be looked at by every nation that has the technology to go that direction. What occurred in my mind was a movie several years ago called Space Odyssey. I don't know if you remember that, but do you remember the computer HAL? I think that was the name of the computer. If you disagreed with HAL, it didn't last long. That could be the direction, although we can't quite see how it would go that direction. But, you know, if, it does seem to me that if machines were able to take over the fine lines of right and wrong, or yes or no, where the social interaction is, well, maybe, or yeah, possibly. You get a machine able to make decisions very quickly. If you disagree with the machine, that could be the end of you. That might be an extreme statement. But what I'm getting across is that this does need to be looked at. But the other question that occurred to me, Mr. Rallo, is that you have a council, a resolution here that is looked at, and I listened carefully to it. But I guess what occurred to me is, what, what is the objective of the resolution? It seems to me that what should be in the works is maybe get a collection of people from IU, independent business, businesses that are in the computer business, but that may be involving themselves in a direction toward AI. We ought to get together and, and talk about it, and talk about what, what the dangers may be. You know, you can't leave the social, the human, those factors out of the mix. They have to be there someplace. Because our system, I don't think would survive if machines governed everything we did. They would be another HAL that would be making very easy decisions about everything in life. Might not be very pleasant.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Rallo. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone else on Zoom?
Not that I see, no.
And I'm seeing no further comments here in chambers. So let's come back to council for additional questions or final comments. Councilmember Volan.
Science fiction has been contemplating at this moment for a long time, for a century, at least. Carol Capix coining of the word robot. Isaac Asimov's Three Laws of Robotics. Arthur C. Clarke's Nine Billion Names of God. If you've been paying attention, you could predict this situation. The Moore's Law has been operating for 50 years. It said the number of transistors you can cram into a space will double every 18 months. It's running into the laws of known physics, but even now, the law is still sort, it's a, it's a, not an actual law, it's a theory, but you get the idea. I agree that industry has a terrible track record of regulating itself. I think Mr. Dorfman summarized it well. When I read daft conversations online, I sometimes feel a little guilty about having played my part in inflicting the internet on Bloomington. I know that it'll be worse if legislation comes further down the road as a reaction to some terrorist event involving the use of AI. The world will panic and do something rash. And we, I don't blame Councilmember Rallo for his impulse to try to get out ahead of the problem. We've always been shaped by our technology as quickly as we've been able to create it. The specter of HAL from Clarke's 2001 Space Odyssey was raised tonight. But I think that ideas that more popularly inform fears of AI are Skynet from the Terminator movie series and the whole idea of The Matrix. Councilmember Sims makes a better point. Automated decision-making, for example, that involves AI is a particular topic of concern that you're starting to see research in, in state houses around the country because it can reify existing discrimination in the biases of the programmers. You can go before that to an earlier form of technology. If you are familiar with the Shirley card. The Shirley card was a photo used to test early film developing machines, and it always featured white people. And so it made black people show up poorly in photo chemistry that was designed primarily for white people. There's a long history of technology reflecting the biases of its creators. Mr. Rallo notes that there are no similar pieces of legislation in other cities calling for this kind of attention. But there is movement at the state level. You can go to the National Council of State Legislatures to see the current status of legislation going through it. 25 different states are considering some kind of legislation related, however tangentially, to AI. Not as many are doing it as seriously as Mr. Rallo has. California and DC appear to be the ones that are farthest ahead. But even Louisiana has passed a law officially studying the impact of AI on, on certain kinds of decision-making. So, you know, I respectfully disagree with Mr. Judd's question about what our role is here and whether Mr. Rallo's legislation is appropriate. I mean, I'm sympathetic to his criticism, but I also disagree that a resolution from us can't have influence. I share Mr. Rallo's desire to get out ahead of the existential threats that AI potentially represents. The question is, how will this resolution have an impact on our own state legislature? Indiana is not one of the states having, considering any legislation involving AI. I don't know that it's a particularly partisan issue at the moment, but I don't see this resolution influencing the state enough to take action, especially with the state's flagship university, normally a sympathetic partner to city concerns, having sent us email from several different sources saying that they were opposed to it. So I want to commend them for bringing it to our attention. I just feel that it's too, it's not, I don't want to say it's too vague. It's not so much that it's too vague, it's that it's just as, as dramatic as the increase in AI potential is increasing, as dramatically as it's increasing, this is too unfocused a tool to critique it or to send further north, especially since I don't think it's going to have a lot of, of impact. I, I think we could target it better to more specific concerns. So I'm not going to be supporting it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims and Councilmember Sandberg. Councilmember Sandberg first, then, please, go ahead, and then Councilmember.
Well, certainly, I respect Councilmember Rallo for bringing the issue forward. With respect to any of our resolutions, they're not legislation, they're non-binding. They're basically signals as to what one of our members or all of us perhaps are concerned about with regard to what we're hearing, seeing, reading. And we're not seeing the kind of call to action. And I think that's one of the things that Bloomington does best. And I think Ms. Pearl kind of made the, the statement that let's be leaders here. Let's not wait for other cities because it sounds like when we're talking about a six-month moratorium or even longer, it kind of, the moment is now for us to get out in front of something as a precaution. And I think we should take all precautions when we're dealing with an Oppenheimer moment, as it was referred to. This is the kind of technology and innovation that can certainly be used for good. But in the wrong hands, as has been stated, it can certainly do quite a bit of damage. I look at things maybe from a different lens. I've been watching the Writers Guild strike, recently joined by SAG-AFTRA. And a lot of that strike has to do with, you know, intellectual property and, and artists being ripped off by technology and not getting their fair share of, of salaries. And the, you know, economist Robert Reich is kind of weighing in there about the dangers of AI with regard to artistic and intellectual property in that if this technology in this brave new world continues to grow at a rate where it is displacing workers and laborers and artists and filmmakers and writers, who's going to have the salaries to buy the stuff that this AI is creating? So there's an economic piece to all this as well. We've had reference to dystopian tales with Space Odyssey and HAL. And certainly, there have been a lot of dystopian novels that are coming to light these days. 1984, Fahrenheit 451 with censoring and book banning, and The Handmaid's Tale with women's erosion of our reproductive rights. And so I do not fault Councilmember Rallo for bringing this to our attention. This is what a resolution does, this is what we're thinking about, this is what we're concerned about. Do we, as a city council, have any ability to do much about it? No, other than use our platform here to sound the alarm. We welcome IU and their scholars and academics to join this. The tech sector, we welcome that. But this message is to our lawmakers, our Congress, our president, the people that are in a position to regulate potential damage that can be quite catastrophic if things, you know, spiral out of control without proper governmental regulation. And so I will be supporting it, and I realize it's a general motion. We don't, I'm very cynical that this will have much impact from our little corner of the world here. But we don't stop speaking truth to power. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Rallo, for bringing this forward. And I just want the public to please understand that questioning and having discussion does not necessarily mean disagreement. I just want to be clear on stuff. I just want to be clear. I fully agree with the concept of what this resolution says. I just, I guess the word and Councilmember Volan was saying something. It wasn't fool. I just, I guess the word and Councilmember Volin was saying something wasn't full or was it? I don't know quite the word, I can't remember, but I'm going to say, I just don't think it's fully baked, just a lack of better term. It is a little bit disturbing to me that we have technology folks in town, we have Loody School, we've got other folks, and they need to be involved in this conversation for it to have meaning. We're going to draft it, we'll send it up to Indianapolis, and it's going to fall on deaf ear, deaf ears. I don't know what Mr. Luke Judd was getting at about sexual orientation and different stuff and even mentioning my name in the same stuff. That's not where I was going. That's not where I was going, not that I disagree or agree with him, that's not where I was going. For us to fully understand, and that's why I want to know, how do I learn about this? Because in order to fully understand, as the resolution states, and like I said, I'm still trying to figure out how we've been as humans so inhumane and so cruel to each other over this history, and I can't get past that in order to get to that, if that makes sense. One of the most important things that I heard is that this AI could help determine and further solidify who gets a loan and who doesn't. I think that's profound because that is exactly what, other than the technology just taking over, those are some realities, and those are some of the deals that people that I know and generations that I know have dealt with. So that's the reality of the matter. I was talking to a couple of friends from up in northwest Indiana, and we were talking about AI. Now, none of us are experts, Lord knows I'm not, I'll have to learn more, and however, we were talking about unibody construction. Does anybody remember that? Yeah, I know, that's when people used to put the whales on the body, but then all of a sudden, you just had this thing come up and it, no more people. That's one of the fears, I think, that Councilmember Rallo, and I don't remember how many years ago this was, but it was called unibody construction, and computers did it, or arms. That was the initial form, at least what one of my friends stated this weekend, was the initial, or one of the initial forms of AI. And, and his point was, nobody really cared back then. I'm not so sure of that, but that's part of the conversation I just want to share with everyone. So, and we have done other resolutions. We've done things on proliferation of nuclear weapons that we all know that's probably not going to do anything with regard to Indianapolis legislation or some of our world leaders, but we took a position to say that is not something that we agree with and will not support and want others to know. This falls into that category with me. And I still will question, I still would like to participate in future conversations, I still would like to hear from Loody folks, from some of our technology people, some of those that have those viewpoints on where this could go, but I see no reason not to support this effort by my colleague this evening. But I do really, really hope that we have more conversations because I think we've got some stuff to talk about well before we get to the results of AI. Let's talk about how we treat each other in the first place. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith and Councilmember Rosenbarger. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Hi, thanks. I, oop, I'm going to be brief, I'm sorry, there's a dog cugging on my laptop. I want to say that I think that this is something that our community needs to have further conversations on. I agree with BEBC and other members of council that have said we should work with the community. We have a lot of experts in this space and especially the Loody School, see what they're up to, and so tonight I don't plan on supporting this. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional comments? No? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure how to react to this resolution. We have indeed passed resolutions on topics that the city council doesn't have any direct impact on, like the nuclear nonproliferation resolution of last year, you know, resolutions condemning actions on the state level, things like that. And those were all kind of brought to us and encouraged by community groups that were outraged about something or very worried about something and had done a lot of research and, and had a lot of connections in different parts of the country where they were doing similar things. And so they were more part of a movement and, and this, so in that respect, this resolution is different. Maybe it's because it is cutting edge, but it seems like one council member has a particular concern and is moving very quickly to, to pass a resolution expressing that concern. So it does feel different to me. I would like to take time to learn more about this issue and in particular, understand what we actually could do locally because, like my colleagues, I don't think that the passage of this resolution will have any effect on the state or federal governments to which we send it. So although I also am concerned about artificial intelligence and, just to throw out another pop culture reference, I went to see the last Mission Impossible movie last weekend and the entity is, you know, this general artificial intelligence that is taking over everything. So, and, and I, point well taken that Councilmember Sandberg raised, that, you know, some of these dystopian novels are coming true, so we, there are definitely concerns with AI, but I just feel like we need to have more conversations before expressing kind of the will of the people of Bloomington through our council. So I, I may abstain or I may vote no, I'm not sure yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, thank you for the comments, I appreciate it. Let me address a few of them. The question, one question was by Mr. Judd, was that this was an extreme perspective. It's not a really extreme perspective. I'm reading that over 1,100 experts in the field are alarmed enough that they want a moratorium immediately, even though they're on the cusp of basically launching new models that could make a lot of money. So, and this was in the New York Times, and you can read it in Forbes, and you can read it elsewhere. It's, it's not some kind of fringe idea. This is something that is happening very quickly, there's no doubt, and that's why I've acted quickly to bring this forward. I'm proposing this too because as we're all tasked with the health, safety, and welfare of the community, it obviously affects the health, safety, and welfare of everybody ultimately, our survival. Does this, you know, does it have any teeth? Well, no, it's a, it's essentially a rhetorical tool, but I still have hope that town halls matter, that democracy does filter up from above, that somebody might be listening to us. I'm not so cynical to think that nobody will care, and I don't think that this is a partisan issue either. I think there seems to be alarm from across the political spectrum right now about this technology. In fact, I think it might have the potential to actually bring people together as opposed to this pulling apart that we've seen in society. There was a, the specific mention by Mr. Dorfman about that AI can't program itself. Actually, it can through recursive adaptation. That's something that is being essentially experimented with right now. So the machines can evolve themselves, and how that ends up, we won't know. But unlike biological evolution, which takes many generations to make any difference in intelligence, the machines could become super intelligent in a matter of hours, days? I don't know. I see this as an existential threat that really deserves attention from everybody. So just as in 2005, I offered, I believe it was the first recognition of climate change with the Kyoto Resolution, expressing that climate change was an existential threat. We didn't, we weren't doing anything about it at that point, but we recognized that it was real and that it was, that it involved us and therefore we should be involved in it. So what is the objective of the resolution? It was, it is to have a discussion, of course, to bring it to people's attention, to sound the alarm, and to see that other people are sounding the alarm too, because I don't think we have very much time. I think that this thing is moving so quickly. So with the consideration of the discussion that we've had, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw Resolution 2313.
Is there anything further required for a motion to withdraw, or?
No, I wish not, this is not an amendment.
And do we need a roll call vote on?
The chair can also ask if there's, if there's any objection to withdrawing the motion to adopt, if there seems to be, you could take a roll call vote, but otherwise you can do it by unanimous consent.
Okay. I also had some comments to offer, but it seems like we have a decision to withdraw here. Are there any objections from council? Seeing none, that motion is withdrawn. Thank you, Councilmember Rallo, for that presentation. I think you accomplished some of what you wanted to with the discussion that we had, so thank you for that.
Madam President, will Resolution 2314 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only?
It's been moved and seconded. Will the deputy clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Councilmember Smith?
Oh, did you call me?
Did you, I'm sorry, you said me?
Can't hear.
Smith, yes. Sorry about that.
Councilmember Volin.
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambolari?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
That passes? Will the deputy clerk please read?
Resolution 23-14, to initiate amendments to the city's comprehensive plan regarding accessible transportation and mobility principles. The synopsis is, this resolution, sponsored by Councilmember Volin, directs the Plan Commission to prepare an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan consistent with four accessible transportation and mobility principles.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move Resolution 2314 be adopted.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you, Councilmember Volin, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm not going to go into too much detail here. I think that the resolution is mostly self-explanatory, but just to give people a synopsis, this is language that has been prepared not only with council staff but with the help of community advocate Deborah Meyerson and Michael Schermus in the Community and Family Resources Department, who is now, among other things, the Human Rights Coordinator. We've been working since the beginning of the year to take principles that Ms. Meyerson advocated in this chamber late last year and to prepare them so that they could be included in the city's transportation plan, which was adopted in 2019 and is an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, which is adopted a year earlier, all of which was a pretty arduous thing, as I noted earlier tonight, task in both cases. This would represent the first proposal to modify any part of the comprehensive plan since they were adopted, which is a little surprising to me, but I thought that the logic of Ms. Meyerson's principles, which came out of the commission, I think that she, I think the CCA, that I thought that it was pretty straightforward matter of writing them up for inclusion in the transportation plan. So this resolution is the first step in the normal process of amending one, any of our, you know, officially adopted plans. It calls for the Plan Commission to prepare an amendment to the plan that we then adopt after they approve it. So this is that first step. And it basically boils down the, I think that when Ms. Meyerson presented the principles in late 2022, there were five of them, we've boiled them down to four. But basically, the legisla, this resolution calls for an amendment to the comprehensive plan to include the following policies that are summarized as accessible transportation and mobility principles. Number one, that we involve people with disabilities in decision-making, that we should establish a transparent, equitable public process that includes people with low vision, mobility challenges, and other disabilities in the full range of transportation decisions from design to operations. Number two, to develop equitable access. That means to connect people with disabilities meaningfully to essential needs and services, including housing, grocery stores, healthcare facilities, jobs, schools, mass transit stops, parks, and other places to live, work, and play. Number three, to provide safe and functional mobility, to provide, to prioritize transportation safety for the most vulnerable users over and above access and speed for cars and trucks through funding for infrastructure such as well-maintained sidewalks, readily available ramps, and accessible transit stops. And finally, number four, to ensure accountability, to document and evaluate progress on implementation of the municipality's ADA transition plan, which is also the driver of this resolution, that we have to fulfill the transition plan, and to do so by updating the comprehensive plan's data and revising its goals at least biennially. This legislation also may be unusual in that normally, when we call for the Plan Commission to, when we try to initiate a change to our plans, the Plan Commission has a 60-day window in which to react. But planning staff, which did not, they were not able to stay tonight, Mr. Robinson could not stay to address this, but planning staff is already preparing a number of other, not necessarily related, changes to our comprehensive plan. They're anticipating bringing them forward in the spring. And so in order to harmonize, they felt that this would be, they would prefer it if it came for the Plan Commission to codify in the spring. I didn't have an issue with that, I just wanted to get it on the books. So this resolution calls for them to take up to 300 days to include this change in the raft of other changes they plan to the comprehensive plan rather than the normal 60 days. So that's the only other unusual thing. But at heart, this is a, an affirmative, assertive effort to include the disabled, to include accessible mobility at the top of our mind whenever we talk about transportation in the city. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions, I'm happy, you know, on any detail of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Councilmember Volin? Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you, Councilmember Volin. I appreciate you bringing this forward. You state that there will be no financial impact in your, in your memo. I realize that this is an aspirational resolution, but to be actualized, it's, it seems that it's going to be costing. resolution, but to be actualized, it's, it seems that it's going to be costing quite a sum of money. Is-
How so?
In order to implement, you know, that kind of accessibility, it will require the infrastructure. And so we will, you know, we will have to find the money for it. And I'm not, I'm not making a value judgment about whether we should or not. I'm just simply saying, how would you respond to that?
Interesting question. I, I don't agree, because as we have said before, and as have my, all my colleagues, or at least several of my colleagues over the years have said, our comprehensive plan and transportation plan are not law. They're not Title 20. They are, the plan itself is aspirational, but the idea behind the plan is, we put it forward to say, these are the city's values, we're not inventing stuff spontaneously, we're pointing to the document that we worked so hard to adopt. And that's all this is doing, is saying that these are values that should be included in that plan. We're going to have to make hard decisions, such as we were talking about tonight, we're going to have to make some hard decisions about lower cascades, as an example. How do we spend money? Where do we spend money? How much do we spend on this issue versus that one? But one thing that we don't guarantee right now is to ensure, for example, that people with mobility issues are proactively consulted on the decisions that we make about infrastructure. We don't formally include them. We have, I mean, just as, as a good point, the Council for Community Accessibility is one of two commissions that we have in the city that have no membership requirement, that we don't appoint people to the council. Anyone can join it. I think as a result of that, while some entities in city government take it seriously, not enough do, because they're not duly appointed. And this doesn't necessarily change the nature of that commission, but it does formally call for, I mean, we do have an officer, again, Michael Schermus, is there to try to address issues. It's a human rights issue. It falls under human rights issue. So I, I don't think that this, these resolutions obligate us to spend any particular amount of money. If anything, you would have had a better argument if I had called for it to be codified within 60 days, because that would require staff time and that would be a fiscal impact. But I agreed that it was okay if it waited until they brought other changes, and so 300 days was what they felt they needed. And I, without that, I think there would have been a fiscal impact, but I don't think that there is, otherwise.
Thank you for the next bit.
Very satisfying.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I would ask the sponsor, being that this is a resolution that is non-binding, and as I heard earlier, has no teeth, but this specifically, part of the synopsis directs the Plan Commission to do something that is really non-binding. And if you could address that just a bit. And also, changing the 60-day turnaround, I think by, by saying, well, I know this is different, it'll be 300 days. Well, basically, five of us here tonight is not going to be here next year. Okay, more than half of us is not going to be here. And I'm not so sure I want to, well, it won't be a burden, because it's a resolution. But to me, I think if the planning department is already working on this, and have that same idea that you're trying to do, and I think it'll come, I'm not so sure I want to change the, the way we do things now with the 60-day turnaround with Plan Commission for 60, or 300 days, as you stated, for this event. I'm just, can you just, thank you.
First of all, resolutions aren't entirely aspirational. You see in the first whereas clauses that Indiana code calls for, in other words, the council can't directly change Title 20 or our plans. We have to ask the Plan Commission first. We do, we trigger that with a resolution. We've used resolutions for, there are other, you know, like, I want to say, certain tax abatements, or certain kinds of tax issues that require the council to start with a resolution, then it eventually, you know, comes back to council for final approval. So it's not true that a resolution is purely, you know, aspirational. But this, I mean, your, your assertion actually says that we should change the code according, I should strike the 300 days, that if I feel so strongly about it, I should just have it passed in 60 days, so that we can argue that, yes, it was passed during this council and not left to the next council. I don't think that that's, I mean, if the next council wants to undo it, they can. We've undone things before, from year to year, maybe not from council to council, but we've changed laws that way. They would do the same thing. They would have to, to bring forward a resolution undoing it. I don't think this is particularly controversial, but again, I think that your concern would really mean that the way I should address it is to strike the 300 days back to 60, so that we can get it in the plan before the end of the year. Does that, do you agree, or?
Fine. I think that your assertion of what you think my assertion is. I just wanted to know the difference when five of us will not be here later, and you've answered that. So that's, that's fine. You've answered it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Smith?
Mr. Schermus is in full favor of this resolution. Councilmember Volin?
It was co-written by myself, Mr. Schermus, and Ms. Meyerson. We worked on it over several months.
Thank you very much. Honestly, I'm aware that the city has moved very slowly on these kind of issues, so I'm very much in favor of this resolution. So thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I was sneezing.
You're good.
I'm good? All right. Additional questions? Okay, with that, let's go to the public for comment on Resolution 2314. If you have, would like to, I'm not seeing a lot here in chambers, but if you'd like to offer comments, please approach the podium. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if members of the public wish to speak to this item, who are joining us via Zoom, please let us know by using the raise hand feature under your control bar, by clicking the reactions tab, or the more tab, or by sending us a chat to let us know you'd like to speak.
I'm not seeing any commenters here in chambers.
Seen none.
In which case, let's come back to council for any additional questions, or final comments. Councilmember Volin? Well, Councilmember, do you want to go last? Councilmember, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I just wanted to thank Councilmember Volin, Michael Schermus, and Deborah Meyerson for working on this. It's something we should have really explored when we wrote the comprehensive plan, or we approved the comprehensive plan in 2018, but I'm very pleased to see this come forward and appreciate the work.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
Just wanted to highlight three wherases that I didn't mention earlier. One is, whereas transportation equity is critical to fully participate in community life, yet is too often unavailable specifically to people with disabilities. And whereas disability is intersectional, affecting people regardless of age, race, gender, sexual orientation, class, or gender identity, and any one person may become disabled at some point in their lifetime. And whereas the city's comprehensive plan, wait, where is it? I just had it here. Here we go. Whereas the comprehensive plan additionally states that, quote, "Investing in multimodal transportation can result in a reduced cost of living for Bloomington residents," unquote, and cites the Council for Community Accessibility, which says that, quote, "Approximately 20% of Bloomington's population has a disability," unquote. I think those three wherases do the best job of saying why this resolution is needed. I think that has been consistent with things I've been saying about public transit, for example. Investing in better transportation doesn't just improve outcomes, it also saves money, improves the cost of living, and makes life better for everyone. So I appreciate your support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Okay, with that, let's move to a vote. Deputy Clerk McDowell, you please call the roll.
Councilmember Smith? Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay. Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
That passes nine zero. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
And that takes us to legislation for first readings.
Madam President, will the move that ordinance 2314 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only?
Seven seconds, sorry. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Will the deputy clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Volin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Smith?
No.
Okay, that passes eight one. Will the clerk please read?
Orderance 23-14, to amend Title VI of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Health and Sanitation, regarding updating and increasing fees for service and harmonizing chapters four and five of Title VI of the Bloomington Municipal Code. The synopsis is, this ordinance makes several changes to Title VI of the Bloomington Municipal Code to bring the title in line with changed local practice, to increase service fees, to clarify references, and to harmonize current practices within the city code.
Thank you very much. We will take this up next at our regular session next Wednesday, August 2nd. And that takes us to our second period of public comment. If there's anyone in chambers who would like to offer comment, please approach the podium. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if members of the public wish to speak, please let us know by using the raise hand feature, or by sending a chat through the meeting host.
Welcome. If you would, please share your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes. No, five minutes, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Madam President, councilmembers, distinguished staff. This is Christopher M. G. from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Wonderful to be back in these storied halls. I hope everyone had a opportunity for some rest and relaxation. Lot to unpack tonight. First, last Friday, I was fortunate to attend the historic groundbreaking ceremony, Hopewell Neighborhood, the repurposing of the old IU hospital site. The long-discussed, well-planned-out project does not represent a singular concept, but rather a community one. The new neighborhood symbolizes our vision to, vision to address our critical housing needs. The credit flows to many tributaries, the mayor, city staff, Bloomington Transit, the RDC, the CBCI, and of course, this body, who weighed in on the plan process, specifically the alleyway vacation, as least I recall, and probably many other matters. Next up, I want to look at the county commissioners' reestablish, reestablishment of the capital improvement board, the CIB, that Madam President brought up earlier, as far as upcoming appointments. The governing structure to manage the expansion and updating of the Monroe County Convention Center has been set by the CIB, and the previous CIB was endorsed by this body, eight to one last December, and the new ordinance, I believe, irons out the issues related to the city-county joint venture. The chamber appreciates the input that the council representative and the mayor's office had in producing what I believe is a fair and simple structure of coexistence between the two governments. The selections are split evenly between the two entities, no elected officials, with the seventh seat chosen by the six appointees. The commissioners recently named their two selections, former deputy mayor, Ivy Tech Chancellor John Weinkart, and former county commissioner Joyce Pulling. I commend that body for its selections and due diligence in making it. This is an indication, this is a community-wide effort with a way to move forward in a process that's taken way too long. The State Assembly has put a strict timeline for this process. I appreciate this body moving forward with a September 6, where they are going to appoint someone, and I hope the mayor's office moves forward, opening up its applicant portal. Yes, these initial steps are just initial steps, and the work will need to continue, but they're important that something we passed, which was the food and beverage tax by the county council in 2017, has those funds used for its intended purpose, the expansion and renovation of the convention center. I thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. M. G. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom? Seeing none. We'll come back to council and take up matters of council schedule.
No items to discuss tonight. Welcome back from your break.
August 2nd, then. Any other items of business? Seeing none. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.